Good evening, call the regular. Good evening. There we go. I'll wait till Seag is back. Well, good evening, call the regular meeting of the Ames City Council to order on Tuesday, June 24th, welcome everybody. We'll go right into consent agenda and does anyone want to pull any item from consent tonight?
Need to pull item 28.
28, alright. Staff has asked that item nine be pulled for clarifications, so we'd like to pull that. Anything else? Alright, entertain motion on consent, less item number nine and number 28.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Beatty Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Alright, item 28, Rachel?
I just need to pull this one for conflict of interest.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I am interested in hearing more, is Cory here? Or not?
What are you referring to?
Well, item 28, it's one of those items that's related to our efforts on our climate action plan and some people might be interested in how this impacts things, if he's here. If he's not here, that's okay too.
You can ask him to come to the next council meeting and talk about it if you want.
I'd be interested in knowing what the impact is.
Would that affect your vote tonight?
Uh, no.
Okay, alright, entertain motion on resolution.
I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Beatty Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Obstain.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Thank you, and item number nine, Chief Huff asked that this be pulled, he wanted to make a clarification on this item.
Evening. This is a grant that we're currently applying for right now and just today, we learned that a part of the grant is that it can't be used for live animals, vet care, and a few other things. And so, part of the grant we were applying for was a Crisis K-9 program, now we can't, so we just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we'll be pulling that portion out of the grant application, we'll continue on with the other piece of it. And we also looked at, you may be familiar with the BYRNE grant, B-Y-R-N-E grant, we looked back at last year's qualifications and I think the Crisis K-9 would fit if they don't change anything from last year to this year's application, which will be, pretty soon, we'll be applying for that, so just wanted to make sure it was clear that that piece we can't apply for.
Chief, is there any opportunity to swap in something else on this grant application if we're pulling the K-9 aspect?
It's probably a little late because it's due Monday, and so we're up against it.
There's no further questions, entertain motion approving the application unless the aspect related to the K-9 team.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Beatty Hanson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, move on to public forums, it's time we set aside comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. And we would ask people to limit their comments to three minutes or less, and so the floor is open, if there's anyone who wants to address council under public forum. Seeing none, we'll close, oh, go ahead please. You introduce yourself and you may start.
My name is Jason Allen, I'm a community person, I am a homeless. I want to know if there's a place we can go for the homeless that set up camp to feel like we're part of the community, we feel like rejected and we just want to be part of something. I'm a good person, I just want to be part of something bigger than myself, I just want to give back to the community and be a good citizen.
Well, I greatly appreciate that and I think there'll be the next item on the agenda may be of interest to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, we'll close public forum and move on to item number 36.
So, good evening Mayor and City Council, you know I'm Pavin Goldbeck, I'm the Assistant City Manager here, I'm joined tonight by just an incredible team who over the last six, seven, eight months have really put their heart and soul into outreach with the homeless and they've done some incredible work, back in January you gave them about $11,000 as a pilot flex fund and they've been using that as they've been meeting folks where they are, and so tonight they're here just to talk about kind of their observations and tell you a little bit more about what a day in the life of being on the host team or the homeless outreach services team is like, and so with that, I'll turn it over for them to introduce themselves and talk about what they've been doing.
Good evening, I'm Susan Moore, I work at Mary Greeley Medical Center, I am a part of the host team which stands for homeless outreach support team. So, we put together a presentation and we'd just like to start off with sharing with you what a week in the host team looks like. So, we'll start with Monday, we have pretty much every day covered but one, as you'll notice, we're doing some type of outreach, so Mondays, we are at the Ames Public Library from 11 to 1:00. As we have become more established as the host team, we have seen an increase in the number of people that come to the library to see us, I would say probably in the two hours that we're there, we usually have four to five people, which is a lot considering sometimes people will need to meet with us for a little bit longer period of time, we typically have people that are actually waiting for us at the library to arrive now. And when we are there, we see a lot of people that are requesting assistance, that can include bus tickets, clothing, food and gas vouchers, assistance with completing applications, if that looks like maybe food stamps, if that looks like maybe an apartment application, we also help do the initial paperwork for individuals that are wanting to get services from Irelie Ball, which is our Community Mental Health Center, there's an intake packet that they really like to have done before that appointment, so we've helped people to get that done. So Tuesday, the five of us meet to plan for our Friday meeting, which yearly we'll talk more about, this includes us preparing the agenda for the Friday meeting and talking about any concerns or questions that we may, that may have arisen in the past week. And we also prepare lists of request items for individuals that need to be submitted so that we can purchase those from the Flex Fund.
I'm Julie Saxton, Mental Health Advocate, Ames PD, and Thursdays, this is our big outreach day, we spend the majority of the day doing street outreach, so that includes parks, heading to the library, we'll find some of the homeless camps to try to reach out to those that are camping in the woods, getting to know who they are, establishing those relationships, finding out what their needs are, barriers to being unhoused. Just spending a lot of time at the Romero House on Thursdays, typically starting around 1:30, there's quite a few individuals that go to the Romero House for hospitality, for a warm meal, free shower, are able to do their laundry. At this point on Thursdays, kind of just like the library on Mondays, people are lined up and they are waiting for the host team, so we can, again, talk to them about what are their barriers, you know, what are their goals, and just kind of finding out again, what is their story, but mainly just forming those trusting relationships, and I think that's something that is really important for everybody to understand is that this isn't just street outreach anymore, this has become really getting to know our brothers and sisters in the community, having them get to know who we are on a human-to-human level, and we have established trust with a lot of these folks and they have opened up, talked about their stories, how they maybe lost their housing, their drug addiction, their alcoholism, if that's the case, and maybe even their mental health issues that are a barrier to them being housed. With that, when we visit with these folks, we're talking about ways that the host team and other providers in the community can come together and assist, and that may be, again, kind of like when on Mondays at the library, we're talking about, do you need gas cards, do you need food vouchers, can we help pay for your birth certificate if that's something that they need, social security cards, can we help you make an appointment to get an ID, can we help you get established with a provider here in the community, what does that look like, transportation, bus passes, that's become something that the host team sees as a huge need, as transportation is a huge barrier, so being able to provide those bus passes for folks to be able, one, to get to work, get to work on time to keep their jobs, has been very important. So Thursdays, again, that's a really big day for us, to be able to meet folks where they are, and again, getting to know them on that human-to-human level. Fridays, starting in January, after a couple months of outreach, we decided that it would make a lot of sense for the host team to meet with other providers that probably share the same, you know, folks that we're seeing every day that are unhoused or on the verge of becoming unhoused. So every Friday, from 10:30 to noon, we meet with between 10, sometimes 20 providers here in our community, and we do intense wraparound care, so we have individuals that we talk about, again, what their needs are, barriers, and we all collectively together will try to come up with a very intense plan for that individual, so it doesn't matter if they're, say, a client of Irelie Ball, all of us together will try to figure out how we can meet the needs of that individual to help them become successful on their journey. So that has proved to be very successful, we're able to get a lot done in a very short period of time, and just to be able to see all of the providers sitting together, working together, and being able to also lean on each other for resources that maybe some of us don't have the ability to give to folks. So that's kind of what our Friday looks like, again, that's been very successful. One of the partnerships that we have now is with the Ames Community School District, they're social workers, they're homeless outreach, a social worker, so again, not just some of our unhoused folks are we serving, but our families in the community now, we're able to, really be able to help and tackle together in this large group effort.
So I'd just like to add, without the generous gift of this grant that was awarded to our team, none of this would have been possible, so thank you very much, it's had a huge impact in the community, being able to help people, again, like Julie said, with those basic things, people, you know, often think, oh, everyone in Ames is hiring, go get a job, well, it doesn't work like that when someone stole your backpack and you don't have your birth certificate and you don't have an ID, so there's so many things that go into someone applying for apartments or getting a job that are significant barriers that we have been able to help with, so thank you very much for that, that's making a really big difference. We have also, and I'm gonna let Julie share about this part, Julie's kind of been in charge of this part.
So, with the Flex Fund money that has been allocated to the host team, we thought about how can we also support our small business here in the community and also be fiscally responsible with the money that's been given to us, so we partnered with Overflow and Duckworth Wearing, The Loft, and Miss Meyer. Duckworth Wearing, when we purchased gift cards for folks, they actually matched what we purchased. Miss Meyer's, The Loft, and Duckworth Wearing have agreed to give us the clothes that have not sold, so we will be having a clothing closet in the Mary Greeley Sub-Acute Basement, so we're very, very excited for that, that we'll be able to use for our community members, our families within the Ames Community School District. So, the host team, the five of us, the core team, and then the social workers with the Ames Community School District, we will be the ones that will be able to shop in that Sub-Acute Basement, so we are very grateful for our small business partners, and I think, and for them too, they're able now to give back to the community and help clothe our community.
My name is Nick Torntstra, paramedic with the Arch Program, so I put together some of the, well, this feels loud, put together some of the numbers that we have come up with since we started doing some of the outreach and that, I mean, they're in front of you and I'll have extra copies here, but just kind of wanted to go, give a brief overview of what those are and what they mean, because really, this is a collaborative effort between a lot of agencies, so host is not doing the work individually, but rather, we're acting as like a mechanism to allow people into these other agencies or facilitating resources where they're available, so we're not building a house for them to be sheltered in, we're saying, let's explore community options for shelters, so is it the Bridge Home, is it Salvation Army, so we're greasing the wheel, so to speak, of just getting people into the right places. So, this really was a huge community effort, but having access to the funds and that really enables us as a team to remove some of the barriers to getting that care, whether it's a cellphone, whether it's, because if you're, I mean, if you're trying to get a job, cellphone's important to be able to have contact with your potential employer, those kinds of things, so 51 people sheltered is kind of the big number at the top there, and that's getting people into some kind of shelter, so it's not necessarily a permanent thing, but it's, hey, we're able to get you into a hotel for enough time to be able to apply for the other resources that you need, so we got you funding through whatever means to get a roof over your head for the time being, the 13 households are more, that more stable housing numbers, so people that were able to get into apartments or some kind of living arrangement where they're actually on their own and they're able to, you know, come and go as they please, it's their own place, and so the 27 individuals that, that pairs with that 13 number, so it's 27 people, so some of those that we've housed have been families and that, so 27 people have found permanent housing through the efforts of the host team and their partners in the community. 61 people provided with clothing, so that's a huge one too, because we, a lot of the work we did was through the winter, so I mean, it was a matter of getting coats, mittens, hats, gloves, and other clothing for people who are out on the street, and I don't remember who mentioned it, but a lot of times, if you leave your stuff out in the community, it gets stolen, so we're finding people, like, we got you a coat and somebody stole it, or I don't have it anymore, or whatever might have happened, and so, you know, we work to try to, you know, sometimes we end up doing it again and, you know, saying, hey, you know, it's cold out, we're giving you a coat, it doesn't matter how many you've got, really. The bus passes, that's been a huge thing too, transportation is a barrier, so we've gotten 12 people bus passes, so not just like a ticket, but, you know, a monthly pass to be able to use CyRide throughout the month, the two tickets out of town, now we're not, we're not just kicking people out and sending them elsewhere, these are people who have support systems in other communities where we feel they would be better supported, and so, you know, just getting them, you know, we purchased a bus ticket to California the other day because somebody got stranded here, visiting family, was kind of couch surfing and needed a ride back to California, that's, I mean, relatively inexpensive than, you know, trying to find other, you know, leaving them here and having them try to make their way on their own, so. And, oh, and I went over the phones, yeah, and I think, you know, these numbers reflect individual people, I mean, there's no magic number of people that we can help, I mean, to me, one is enough, in terms of getting them the help they need, but we're, we're really trying to provide, like Julie said, that wraparound care, you know, like, there are multiple needs when you encounter an individual, it's not always just one thing that they need, because if that were the case, this would be easy, but, you know, when there's mental health needs involved, when there's housing, jobs, and all these other things, we're just trying to remove as many of the simple things as we can to be able to focus on the bigger things, and so that's kind of what these numbers are showing, like, you know, some of them seem kind of like it might be a low number, but it's really, it really reflects a lot of work and time and effort, and we're very thankful, again, for the support from the city to be able to accomplish that, so, Becky?
Hi, I'm Becky Lundee, I'm the Arch Social Worker at Mary Greeley, and we would like to tell you a story of one of the families that we've helped. The family is a single mom and a six-year-old daughter fleeing a domestically violent relationship out of state, they arrived in Ames with nowhere to go, their journey starts with staying at the Bridge Home. Mom enrolls her kiddo at Ames Community Schools and connects with the school's Suna and Family Advocate, who is also the homeless liaison for the district, the liaison is part of the host's service provider meetings, she shares the family's story and contact info with the host team, host starts connecting with mom multiple times a week. We were able to assist getting clothes for her daughter and for her to wear for job interviews, we assisted her with applying to multiple housing programs such as Serha, Eastwood, Homes For A While, and etc. Mom landed a stable job and is working, she needed help with childcare, we connected her with Together For Good and she started working with them for childcare, respite, and mentoring. We also worked with the Boys and Girls Club here in Ames to get childcare for the summer, we requested and received a scholarship for her daughter for the entire $200 membership fee for summertime. After many weeks coming close to her exit date, I'm sorry, mom was diligent in calling Access every week to see if they had any openings, after many weeks coming close to her exit date at the Bridge Home, she, sorry, she found out they were approved and they were able to move in, we continued to help mom apply every month for Home For A While program, in which they found out they were selected for the June family. Host helped mom move from Access Shelter to the Home For A While apartment, we are continuing to support and help mom and her daughter navigate their journey to permanent housing, without the support of the council and the funds allocated, the host team and our service providers' meetings, this successful journey could not have happened in such a timely and efficient, efficiently, thank you for your continued support, it is truly making a difference in our community.
So, we know, when you allocated this dollar amount back in January, we said we would be back in the summer to give you a report, and so, the funds haven't been fully expended, I think just about 60% of it has, and so we'll be back, once that has been fully expended, to give you another update, but with that, I think, I've been to some of their meetings and it's pretty incredible what they're all doing, just coming together and working together to find solutions for our community members who are in need, and so, thank you to you all, and I think we're open to any questions that you guys have.
Thank you for the report, questions?
I have a couple, we heard in our public forum, we have a resident who's wondering, is there somewhere in Ames where folks who are experiencing homelessness can camp legally so that, you know, they can maintain their freedom but also be part of the community?
Not that I'm aware of at this time, so that, again, has been a pretty big barrier for us who, for the folks that are experiencing chronic homelessness.
So that's something that we probably need to have on our radar as a need moving forward because we know that it's a barrier.
Yes.
And we also know that we want people to feel secure, that's both those who are experiencing homelessness and the residents that they're living with, so we want everybody to have a more positive experience. Given that we don't have a place where people can camp, have we identified with these discussions you've been having, any concerns about not having a secure place to leave belongings during the day, and is that also a barrier?
We actually, so, anybody who's heard me, that's one of the things I bring up quite a bit, and I talk about systemic issues leading to unhoused people, and then we need systemic solutions, and I think that's what this is, just today, I was in a meeting and we've just established, I guess you'd call it a work group. work group, to talk about like heating and cooling centers. And part of that is going to be safe places for folks to put their things. I do know the Bridge Home right now did add some, I think you'd call them a tote, like a pretty good-sized tote that a padlock can go through. So even if someone can't stay there, they can leave their things there a certain amount. That's the other issue. If someone is evicted, they have all of their furniture, they can't necessarily afford a storage unit a lot of times. I've had grants off and on where I can help with that, but for the most part, that's also something that lacks funding and that we really can't do through this. Storage units are very expensive in Ames, very. So it's definitely an issue, something that we've talked about. I would say, though, that, again, that Friday afternoon, Friday meeting, we talk about these kinds of things. I know, again, that the supervisors are looking into it, the mayor, you guys are all looking into things like that. And so, solutions are happening, and a lot of it is through this conversation. I just think if we would have had this going last summer, when the Welch Avenue Apartments closed, and we had 17 families that were unhoused for a very long time, and only a couple of us that were able to really devote much time to it. If we'd have had this network going, I think we would have had so much more success. So I'm so, I am so thankful that it's happening because I feel like now I have a lot more support, so.
Other questions?
One more question. I know in our report that we received earlier in the year that peer navigators was, was something that was recommended, so peer-to-peer assistance. I'm wondering if you have made efforts to identify those folks you've been talking with who would really like to get involved in solving the problems and working collectively and creatively with our providers to, to try and identify solutions?
Yes, yeah. So we, I actually have, Becky and I have talked about, there's a person, I don't want to necessarily divulge, I'd like her to do that, but she is very, she has lived, so she has lived experience. She worked with YSS, with, with me, with some other folks. And she now has access to folks at the Motor Lodge. And so she acts already as a peer support coach, and she's very interested in coming on board. There's a, I don't, it's not really a grant, but Iowa Finance Authority has like a creative, it's $100,000 you can apply for, for someone who's doing something in a community to work with people that are unhoused to help with a solution. And that's something that I am hoping, there's several of us that are hoping we can get together, Center for Creative Justice, that sort of thing. And that would definitely be a big part of that. So there would be some finance, you know, some finances available to pay. Right now, we get creative with like gas cards and things like that to help. But definitely, it's, it works for Department of Human Services, with the parent partners, I mean, with support coaches in recovery. I mean, there's so much success. So I think it would work definitely for this as well.
Any other questions?
Certainly sounds like we've got individuals who want to get involved and who do have that lived experience. So I'm really happy to hear that, that you're working with them. And I hope that our, our resident who was speaking earlier maybe has connected with the team already and expressed interest.
I just wanted to add, there are so many peer-to-peer models. I was just having a conversation with someone last week. I've looked at like University of Iowa offers that training for the peer-to-peer. So I think it's an amazing opportunity, and I hope that we're able to develop that and move forward with that. There's so many communities that have the hospitality centers that are staffed, the peer-to-peer concept. That's, that's pretty popular within the state, within our state here. And I just, I love that. I've done a lot of looking at those programs, so I think they, they're amazing.
Go ahead.
This is a conversation for council to have as well, but are providers having proactive discussions or conducting risk assessments based on potential cuts to housing programs, Medicaid, other things that are supporting our at-risk communities?
We, again, it comes up in the Friday meetings. So rapid rehousing is possibly going away, at very least changing as of October 1st. And definitely Medicaid, all of those, you're right. So any of the federal-type programs, even just places that are subsidized, housing, you know, with HUD changes, we talk about it. We don't have a lot of control over it at the moment, and we don't have any solutions. But if you do, we'd love to hear them.
Others?
Yeah, so, thank you for this great report tonight. Super encouraging, Pa. Thanks for your leadership in this. This has been an opportunity for us to learn a lot tonight. And again, you've been doing this how long?
Since November.
Since November. And so, as, as you continue to do this, the longer the period of time, the more we can learn. And can you give us even just since November, have, are there any lessons for us in terms of the numbers of homeless? Are we seeing things static? Are we seeing increases? Could you give us some sense on just sort of trends?
Yeah, I think, I'll speak for the team, but I also, I'll speak for myself. I think we all knew that there were quite a few chronically unhoused and families that are on the verge of. We didn't have a clue as to how many until we really got into doing this outreach, specifically partnering with the Ames Community School District to find out the, and I will use the word obscene, number of families that are barely hanging on is very, very concerning. The other thing, too, I'll say is there, there are a lot more folks that are unhoused than we, even in the community, would, would know. And why would you know, right? And I think this is a great opportunity for us to also educate the community. There are plans to be able to provide free educational trainings on homelessness. We're hoping to maybe have community outreach teams that will be able to be trained. How we are going out and helping folks, that's kind of a conversation for later. But what I can tell you is, I don't think I was prepared to see the number of people struggling. And it just goes back again to this is a community issue, just like mental health, just like substance use, right? I think it's really important as we move forward for the community to have a true and accurate understanding of what is going on just in this community. And then providing that education to our community members, because I really, really believe, again, this takes our community coming together and learning how, how do we meet the needs of our brothers and sisters? And sometimes, a lot of times, honestly, it's just getting to know people. Again, on that human-to-human level, where people will open up and then share their story with you. And a lot of this, too, I want to say, we couldn't do this without the funds that you've given us, truly. But the other piece of this, too, is that we are, we are really helping people and learning about their life story, what got them here, and isn't just giving them a gift card. We're checking in with them and texting with people every single day. And this mother that Becky talked about, we reached out to just even personal friends of ours, just saying, obviously, we didn't give a name, but we're like, hey, this, this family is really struggling. We ended up having community members, even in Gilbert, that were giving away clothes, shoes, games. We have a community member who was a single mom that went through this and said, I will mentor this mom. And we shared that with her. I really feel like we're giving people hope as well. So again, it's not just giving those gift cards out. We are learning who people are in our community. And I really hope that our community members will have an opportunity to come out with us. And it is uncomfortable, but I think that's okay to be uncomfortable. We're still uncomfortable, and we do this for a living. And that's okay. I think that's needed, to be uncomfortable. So we can change, we can change the lives of other people.
We have time for one more question. Go ahead.
Well, Julie, I mean, this is, this is a very helpful, your answer was very helpful and enlightening. But I'm, I'm still curious about, from a trend line perspective, are we seeing any increases or are things sort of static? It'd be helpful for us to know that. And if you don't know, that's okay, but do you have a sense of how the numbers are going?
So, we definitely have helped some people that were chronically unhoused to become housed. A trend I'm seeing that is terrifying to me is the number of people with intellectual disability that are unhoused, the number of elderly who are so vulnerable, like people that cannot be on the street. And so a shortage, I guess, of, which is why Optimize, so Optimize comes, and they're actually trying to get more beds, things like that, more placements. But with the closing of a lot of nursing homes, the closing of like Woodward State Hospital School, things like that, we've put a lot of vulnerable people out, and if they lose their housing and they need to have three times the amount of their income in rent, and they only make $967, or, you know, $967, they basically could get a $300 apartment. Those don't exist. So that is something that I think there's a shortage of, and that's what I see as a trend right now.
Yep, and that's, and that's always going to be hard for finding that kind of housing in Ames. And my final question, I love the story that you gave about the mom and her daughter, and I, and I want to also thank you, Julie, for humanizing people, referring to them as brothers and sisters. I think that's very appropriate and beautiful. Could you give us a sense of the homeless that are here? And I, and I know that the apartment closing was a big source of this, but do you have a sense of whether the homeless here are people that had been in Ames for a while or they're people who have come from other communities to Ames that are homeless? Can you give us some sense of that? Is that possible?
So, just sort of thinking back, one of the questions that we do ask people is, how long have you been in Ames? And it's interesting because there are people that have been in Ames and gone to other communities and returned. We hear that a lot, of people that say, oh, I was originally from Ames. I lived in Ames 20 years ago, and then I went to California for 10 years, and then I've come back to Ames and I want to stay in Ames. So that is a trend that I am seeing, are people that have been here, have moved on, and then have come back to Ames.
Okay.
We, I would say we have, there's definitely quite a few folks that are chronically unhoused for various reasons. We see a lot of people who are fleeing domestic or sexual assault that are unhoused. We're seeing more and more of that. And a lot of families that are kind of going back to when we partner with the Ames Community School District, families that are barely hanging on, get a loss of a job, and they're couch surfing, living in their homes. That is definitely, we're seeing a higher trend with that as well.
I know this is really an important topic. We could probably talk all night on it. I know Amber's got one more question, and after that, we'll, we need to wrap this up. We have a lot of items on the agenda tonight. Go ahead.
Kathy, one quick question, and I'll probably email you separately, too. The ID people that you're seeing, are they on a waiver list? Or they have a waiver, but they've been discharged for whatever reason and now can't find new placement?
I would say it's about 50/50 that have the waiver, and the elderly, too. A lot of them don't have the elderly waiver, but they could use it.
Okay.
And that system's changing as well. You probably don't have.
Anything else you want to add, Pa?
I don't think so. This group will continue doing the great work that they're doing, and we just thank you again for your support, so.
Yeah, and I would just agree with, I think all of council greatly appreciates the work that you are doing, and we're pleased to hear the success that you're having. And like I said, we could probably spend the whole evening just talking about this topic alone, but we need to move on. So, thank you very much. And I presume you're going to connect with the young man there in the back, who's came up and offered some comments during a public forum. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item number 37, Presentation of Conceptual Design for Resource Recovery and Recycling Camps. And even though it's not July 1, it's my pleasure to introduce and recognize our new Public Works Director, Justin. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
He's, he's made it very clear, though, that any mistakes that happen are not his until July 1. All right, Justin?
No comment.
No comment. All right.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have for you conceptual design and financial analysis from our Resource Recovery and Recycling Center. With us tonight, Mark Peebler, the Superintendent of the Resource Recovery Center, you know, Assistant Manager Brian Phillips, and we have Garrett Wilson and Katie Kinley from HDR as well. We tasked them with a lot of work over the past six weeks, and we want to present this to you tonight. Some things I want to keep in, in council's mind tonight, as we really are looking at a 10,000-foot perspective here. We're going to show you a lot of stuff tonight. It's really high-level. We have some conservative cost estimates. But really what we're looking for from council tonight is, are the services that we're proposing to provide at this facility, are they in alignment with your thoughts for solid waste in the community? And is our fee structure in alignment with that as well? So we'll go through some details here, and that's the comments we're looking for from council tonight. Just as a reminder, this is along Freel Drive, between Dayton Avenue and Southeast Fifth, just north of there. We have nine and a half acres that we're looking at. And just as a background for, for reminder, we are moving away from waste to energy. The Resource Recovery Center and the Ames Power Plant will be decoupling here as early as July 1, 2027, if not earlier. And part of that is, really, we needed to find a new way to handle solid waste within the community. So this transfer station will collect all the solid waste. We will take recyclables and market those. We will take the remainder of the solid waste and transport that to Carroll County as a final disposition. And really what we need to look at is, how do we prioritize our waste diversion with this? And so something that has happened for the last 50 years with the Resource Recovery Center is, waste diversion was really turned into refuse-derived fuel. And now when we look at waste diversion, we really need to think in terms of recycling. We'll talk a lot more about recycling here later in the presentation and in future council meetings as well. For council's information here, we are looking at 58,444 tons of waste annually. That's everything that comes through the system, that's in the lower right-hand corner there. And the 2045 number that's highlighted in red is 78,000, almost 79,000 there. The reason we're looking at that is, we projected this model over a 20-year period, as that's the time period we look at for the financial debt that we'll take on for this facility. So we're really looking at, what should that look like over the period of this debt that we're looking at?
Does that take into account the other communities that have expressed interest, or is it just our current?
Currently, it is, it is including all the partner communities. So we, we obviously, we can talk more about that later, but we need to get those commitments from them again, and I'll, I'll address that a little bit later. On this slide here, we look at, in 2018, we did a waste study of what's in our waste stream. As you can see, there's things, 22% paper, 16% plastics, and among other things, there's, there's opportunities there for waste that may not need to be transported to Carroll County, and those costs that could be used in recycling, something we haven't done whole heartedly in this community yet. So I'll start here with the overall site layout. North is to your left on this screen, Freel Drive is at the bottom. There is a transfer station. I'm going to do my best to get it. You can see my mouse there, perfect. A transfer station here in the center. And what happens is, this blue line, as it tracks around, they're hopefully slower than that in real life, that is our commercial haulers. That is the route we would propose they take. They go across a scale into the transfer facility where the tipping floor is. They come out of the, the transfer station, circle back around on outbound scales, so we can make sure we have accurate record of what went into the facility. So that's where a commercial hauler, that's bringing in municipal solid waste to the facility. So that's where a commercial hauler that's bringing in municipal solid waste to the facility. This next line, this green line is our transfer trucks. These are the trucks that will take the waste, municipal solid waste from the facility to Carroll County or any recyclables that we have to a materials resource facility in another community. So these go in a different entrance into the transfer facility where they're actually entering into a tunnel where the waste will be, will put into transfer trailers and again, taken off the, the site and into the final disposition area. This red line here represents what we call our customer convenience area. This is for individuals that have, um, separated recycling, household hazardous materials, the sort of things that you see right now on the backside of Resource Recovery. This is more of a modular area that we can expand as necessary for whatever services really need to serve our community. And then finally, this is the proposed route we would foresee for yard waste, uh, as far as yard waste free days that, that the community is familiar with. There's operational things that we would look at to say, do we continue to have those in the, in the quantity that we have now? With the yard waste being there and us having staff and taking this over, we might be able to offer it on a more full-time basis and maybe our, our free days are a little bit different. But we wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like as you, as you go around this, um, this facility and what that looks like there. So after this, I will go into each area with a little bit more detail, but I wanted to just give you an idea of what that routing looks like, uh, as a customer of the facility.
Can you stand that just?
And if you're going to cover this later, I just want to bookmark this.
Have you modeled the volume of trucks at that eighty thousand? If, if you, if you have things at that, that rate, have you modeled the, the traffic in and out?
Yes, um, not from a, not, not from a necessarily a traffic impact study as you would see with a development, but we've modeled how many trucks come in there. You know, you're talking forty to fifty Packer trucks a day dropping off. From the, um, transfer trucks going out, you're in the nine to twelve range depending on where we're at in, in the, um, if, if you're talking at the twenty forty-five range, it's probably closer to twelve trucks per day that are leaving. So does that answer your question?
I mean, it does and I, I want to stay in the conceptual level that you've asked us to stay at and not get in the weeds. But, but on the conceptual level, in order for this to work, you have to have a certain amount of flow of your trucks going in and out and trying to calculate how much time each truck's going to be there. I, I'm just asking, has that been factored into this layout?
Yes, absolutely it has.
Okay, thank you.
Some photo images that might help council just kind of understand what we're looking at. On the right-hand side is an image of a tunnel. This is what our tunnel could possibly look like. The, the, um, waste that is transferred is actually loaded from the top. It helps with some, some compaction of the material as it, as it falls into the trailers themselves. On the upper left, you can see what a scale house would look like. This is a pretty, um, uh, pretty nice scale house. They have an awning over the top and a roof. We're not proposing that sort of stuff, but it gives you an idea what our inbound and outbound scale might look like. And finally, on the left-hand side, it's not exactly what this, um, this concept proposes, but you can see a tunnel on the right-hand side of that lower left photo that's partially submerged beneath the tipping floor and then the big doors where the municipal solid waste comes in. Just to give you a flavor of what it might look like when you look at this facility. So this is the tipping floor. This is where all the action happens. Currently in the, in the design we have right now, transfer trucks would come in from, uh, the top of the screen here and they would bring what we call unshredded waste because we are still going to process it, dump it on the, on the tipping floor. It will go into a pit and through conveyors into a shredder, a ferrous magnet and an eddy current system which pulls out, um, ferrous metals and non-ferrous metals. We currently do this at the facility at the Resource Recovery right now. And then it's going to come back off onto the tipping floor and then into a shredded pile. So you're going to have a, a separated area for shredded and unshredded. Now, all material that goes through the Resource Recovery, this, this, um, this transfer station is not intended to be shredded. There's going to be some waste that we decide does not need to be shredded. It might be some light construction and demolition debris that we, we decide just needs to be transferred right away. So we're going to, we're going to basically have piles on the floor that are going to be sorted. That currently happens at the existing facility, so staff is used to doing that. But just to give council an idea, that's what it, what it kind of looks like. Something of notice, um, this picture on the right-hand side there, that's a current facility with, um, MSW stacked up. We look at this facility as the what-if. What if there's a blizzard and we, we cannot transfer to, um, Carroll County for a day? That's likely to happen at some point in time. So this current tipping floor, if we assume we can stack the twelve feet high, which I believe we can easily stack to twelve feet and we usually go higher than that in the current Resource Recovery Center, um, we can hold up to two days of municipal solid waste. Now, what would happen in that situation is we likely wouldn't shred right away because we'd have to make more room on the floor once, um, conditions started improving so we could continue to transfer. So some of that stuff might be transferred immediately rather than shredded. But this is just something that I wanted to provide council detail about, that we have at, at least two days worth of storage and likely more. And in a twenty forty-five scenario, we're projecting we have about a day and a half's worth of storage because as we see growth in the, in the community and populations, we expect to see growth in waste as well.
Okay, I guess stop. So, um, but on those days where it's like super heavy snow, then the, the garbage trucks aren't out either.
Absolutely.
So I apologize, I just couldn't let this pass. So how, how does that play into things if the garbage trucks aren't going out? Then, then are you really having that kind of storage there?
Likely not. You know, we, what we need to plan for is, is the what-if Ames doesn't get the snow, but Carroll County does.
I see.
And so that's what we're looking at. But you're exactly right. There are days where it's, it's, um, difficult conditions across the entire state. And in those days, you're right, the Packer trucks aren't coming in, the commercial haulers aren't coming in, so we're not having that issue.
Great. That, that's what I need. Thank you so much.
Maybe to you, some of your questions Tim earlier, this is what it looks like going to Carroll County from our facility. It is seventy-two miles. And we look at the, the, the information you see in the, in the graph on top or the, excuse me, the charts on top are assuming the twenty forty-five, the end of the planning year conceptual design phase. You're talking two to three trips a day. It's a long ways over there. Three trips is going to be difficult. We feel for it really confident in two. But until we really do it, we're not going to know for certain what it looks like. So we would look at things like how do we shift hours operationally? And that's nothing that council needs to worry about tonight. But just to give you an idea of what this looks like from a, from a trip standpoint. As we talked a little bit earlier, we do plan on having recyclables, um, at this facility. We'll talk more in a little bit about, um, single-source or curbside recycling, that we can take at this facility, which is necessary as part of our need to divert waste from the, the transfer station. So recycling is a good way to do this and we have planned areas for this within the facility. There's going to be less volume recycling coming in. So as we collate that here in the facility, we would get a load full, ready to go to a material recovery facility, likely in Des Moines. And we would load that material out as well. It's important that we keep these separate so we don't have contamination. Contamination takes, um, the, uh, rate that we can get as a commodity and it lowers it when they're contaminated.
Are you going to spend more time on the recycle, uh, later on in your presentation?
Uh, as far as, uh, what?
Just in general, commingling, whatever. I, I got a question on capacity here.
Um, we, we don't have a lot more on this recycling, so if you, if you got a specific question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Your, your pie chart just caught, made me realize like twenty-two percent of our waste is paper. And you got plastic and we talked about potentially collecting commingled.
Correct.
Recycling. And we know that it will not be one-hundred percent adopted, but let's just assume that it reaches a certain amount. I'm just curious, when looking at the graphic, if that's fifty percent of what's coming, if you reduce the MSW and increase the recycle, is there enough space for the recycle gathering because it makes up so much of the pie chart? Does that make sense?
So I think, I think what, what would happen if, and maybe if I, I'll try to answer this and I think I understand what you're asking. If our recycling becomes so successful that we have less municipal solid waste, we have more recycling, this wall you see here would get moved. This is a, a, sorry, my mouse is a little behind. It's, it can be viewed as a temporary wall. It's a way that we can move it farther north in the facility and say, we need more room for recycling because it's what we're seeing. The other part of that too is recycling, the hauling for recycling goes to, uh, uh, Material Recovery Facility in Des Moines. So that is a trip that takes a little over an hour versus a three-hour trip for, um, municipal solid waste. So I think as we get that, if we see that happening, we can transfer much quicker on the recycling side. So we need fewer or we need less area on the floor for that.
Okay, I, that's, that's helpful to know. I just was thinking, man, you're pushing against, you know, these bunkers essentially. And just didn't anticipate that that would be a movable wall, but just like you said, if we're really successful, which we hope we are, that's our whole goal essentially.
Correct.
It didn't know if the building had contemplated, the size footprint had contemplated that growing and all of a sudden we're, we're too small on the recycle, um, collection.
Yeah, we're, we're contemplating the entire waste stream. So I think that would be in there and that, that, that separation would be where it, where it needs to be based off what we see coming in.
Okay, thanks.
Justin, theoretically, am I right in thinking that we may be having an agreement with Carroll County to bring some of their recyclables to our center on a return trip?
Correct. We still have to work those details out, but that's, there is, um, there's some synergies to be made there that they're interested in, that we can help market that easier for them. And we can also, um, it saves from, if you think of it from their standpoint, they have to aggregate a lot before they get a load ready. And if we can do that for them and take it and do that quicker, it, it helps both, um, both entities. So yes, we are looking at that. We don't have details on that yet. Those, that's some things we still need to work out with them.
So you would just drive that return truck through, fill it up or whatever?
Correct.
So you don't have to, because not having to store that onsite, you're not, you're basically not going to handle it twice. You're going to do it throughput essentially.
We would certainly look at that. That, that would be the most efficient way to do it, absolutely. Yard waste, um, yard waste area, what we were proposing for this is it's the back part of the site. It's the far eastern part of the site where the actually current yard waste area is right now. With this, we're looking at, um, taking our, our city trees of what Parks and Recreation takes care of, our street trees, as well as the, the citizens' yard waste as well. And really trying to make that one operation for the city. So that way we can, um, you know, be, be more efficient in our work there with that. So this is an area that, um, we've dedicated for yard waste storage. This is probably the most challenging area because it's, it's not incredibly large. So you might need to see things like we have to chip it sooner. We can't maybe go a year, uh, before we do that. It might have to be every six months or every four months that we do that in order to manage those piles a little bit more efficiently. On, on the screen now, this is the office area. It's right adjacent to the, um, tipping floor in the facility. So there's offices and locker rooms and break rooms and a maintenance area for, um, staff and, and equipment and, and all the things that you need in a facility. But I think the big thing I want to point out here is the education center. There's a lot of tours that already come to our existing Resource Recovery Center. And so education is important, not only for what we do, but it's incredibly important as we transition into this new model. So learning about how the, um, the system works, learning about the recycling and the needs that we have. We envision a large observation window so you can see out into the plant, similar to the Resource Recovery Center if you've been, been there. We want to show the community what we're doing and what they're getting for their value. And that's a big part of that we put into this, um, as we worked through, through the design. Here's a look at the scale house. Um, this is a rendering on the lower left of what a scale house might look like. We intend to have a, a scale attendant there. As I mentioned earlier, there is an inbound and an outbound scale. This is an opportunity we could look at for reducing costs. You can do something like a temporary office trailer and put it in there. We could take out the outbound scale and have one scale going in. Of course, that puts traffic head-to-head. At some point during a conflict, you have to alternate traffic. But we also think there's opportunities that we can look at some automation there to maybe not have an attendant out there at all the time. There, that, some technology that we can certainly leverage and utilize for that. Household hazardous waste, this is currently by appointments on Wednesdays. Uh, the white building you see in the photo there, we would continue to have that. That exact building would actually move down to the new facility. It currently works in its current size, but we have room on the site to expand it. We can add an, excuse me, add an additional one if necessary. The separate building is, is, is important because we have to log and know where all those materials are and what they, where they come from. And we have a, a contract with Metro Waste to take care of that, uh, facility for final disposition of it. This area here is the, what I call the, the recycling area, the customer convenience area. This is where you would take, um, your separated papers, your cardboard, um, your metals, all that sort of stuff that's currently behind the Resource Recovery area and we'll, we'll build this out into more of a modular area. So this can expand as necessary. This can shrink. It hopefully doesn't need to shrink, but it, it'll be what the size it needs to be. And we envision this covered with an awning, so it's, it's a little more weather protected while not a hundred percent weatherproof. Something that, that helps with the customer convenience out there. And we would, we propose that we, this would continue to be something if a, a citizen or resident decides that they will, they will separate this from their waste stream, we won't charge for the service like we do right now. We, excuse me, we don't charge right now and we continue not to charge. If they're doing this and separating it, this is, um, something that's, that's good for our waste stream. We don't have to take it to, and transfer it to Carroll County, so there's no charge for this. We, we foresee that continuing.
Just a comment and that is, this has been so successful. When I go there, I'm almost parking halfway in the street. So just, I think helping, if we have recycling, curbside recycling, that's probably going to help reduce, you know, some of that. But just as you're thinking through it, having adequate parking for customer service is going to be really, really important because I think there's been times I've been there, there's been five or six people, you know, parked there. They're across the street, they're around the corner. You know, we're all trying to get our stuff as quickly as possible. So I mean, just, I'm thrilled that the community has adopted it so well. It's really been successful. But just making sure that we're thinking through that, especially if we're not getting curbside recycling, you know, going, you know, right away. Hate to have a huge traffic jam or people are not using it. They're getting frustrated, so.
Yeah, this will be a very popular area and you can see that's why we've kind of elongated it to make sure we can service a lot of people at one time. And, you know, still have, have good visibility for people pulling in and out of there as well. There's, there'll also be some what we call indoor recycling. There's some electronics and things that need to be inside. You know, TV monitors, batteries, fluorescent light bulbs. They're, they're in cubes that are inside. We foresee that being, um, along the, the tipping floor, the driveline there. Just areas where we, we can utilize some of that space. So that's the high overview of what we're looking at there and I realize that was really fast. But the important part that comes next is our, our financial model that we put together. So HDR staff did a phenomenal job with this. We were throwing them, um, all sorts of scenarios at the eleventh hour and they were responding really quick. I'm, I'm really pleased with that. But a lot of what, what you're looking at here is we charge a per capita fee to our partner agencies and then we come down.
So before we go into the financials.
Yes.
Can I, can we stay at the conceptual level just for a second?
Absolutely.
So just real quickly, um, fire suppression, sometimes we have fires at our current facility. Could you talk us through how that's being considered with this new facility?
So, um, at the conceptual level, it's, it's absolutely part of it. And there's, there's probably two ways to look at it that what I see, um, would come out in design development and the final design is there are commercial systems and really a lot of it has to do with infrared cameras to see the hotspots, the fires before they happen. Part of that will be, uh, one of the biggest challenges are things like lithium ion batteries. So as we go through, I'm going to back up this slide here. It will probably work right there. It's important from an operational standpoint that we don't shred material and leave it on the floor. If one of those batteries gets in there and it sits there overnight, that's when fires and bad things can happen. So utilizing these, these technologies that look for that, and then they also have fire suppression right there with it. Mark, you can maybe talk a little more about this. I'm probably doing a bad job of explaining it here, but I know you've looked at this systems before.
Yeah, so, uh, one system, for example, is the Fire Rover. So there's early detection with thermal imaging. You can set the parameters, uh, to face the material for the, the thermal or infrared camera. So, uh, you can set the parameters when there's trucks and people there at the facility. It would be at fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred degrees depending on what we set it for, for the diesel exhaust fluid systems because they, uh, heat up when they regenerate to clear out the exhaust. But in the off-hours, we can change those parameters to where at two hundred degrees, we'll say, for example, if it picks something up, it sends out an early detection to where, uh, we can tie that in with the fire department for, uh, notification or a first level as a supervisor or an operator. So that way it draws attention to it. And then with that, uh, equipment, there's also twenty-four hour service. And it is a, uh, basically a system to where they can, uh, extinguish the fire with a, a foam suppression. And it will, uh, they can control where it goes and the areas it needs to be put out and make sure that there's nobody there. So there would be twenty-four hour service for extinguishment.
I wish you guys had really considered this. I'm just kidding. That was an amazing answer. Mercy.
Yeah.
Could you please note they gave a great answer on that? So I, I want to make sure as we go through this, that we're creating space for our workers to have input on the design. And I love HDR. You guys have a phenomenal track record and do all kinds of amazing things. But are we creating spaces for our, we have some really long-term people. Are we creating spaces for those guys to have input on this?
Yes, that's absolutely our, our desire. So, um, we've started with this, this initial layout that, that you saw. We presented it to our staff because we got it last week, presented it to them already. What we intend to do through this whole it to them already. What we intend to do through this whole design development process is to pull them in, it's incredibly important that we can draw it on the on the screen, but what does it look like in the field when they're doing the doing the work, and we want that from them. So, we we plan to have times available when we go through maybe a 30% design review, that we would draw the staff in, talk through it, talk through their issues, and then get that back to the design engineers and say, we need to look at this, or this was a good layout here or there, so we absolutely plan to do that.
On that same note, Tim, just to add, the staff is really the best resource in our existing operation, they have incredible knowledge and skills in being able to disassemble, reassemble, improve upon, all of the different mechanical and electrical systems that we have put together in the existing facility. We have a skill-based pay plan that encourages them to gain additional skills, so that we can put them to work in lots of different areas in the plan, and it's very enriching for them as well. And we intend, as we go through this, to look for ways to not pigeonhole people into, you're a truck driver, you're just going to drive a truck constantly between here and Carroll, and that's all you do. We don't want to do that, we want to create opportunities for rotations, for the employees to continue to build the skills, because we are going to have a number of different mechanical components that are going to require their involvement in maintaining, in improving, in finding efficiencies for. So, we want to continue to build on that legacy.
I love this answer, more as much as anything I've asked, and I just love the fact that we're leaning heavily on our people. I'm almost done with this conceptual thing. I I apologize, I'm slightly fixated on the traffic flow, and we don't have to solve this tonight, I'm just putting a placeholder, that I I hope that we're conceptualizing how the 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 trucks are going to come in and out of there, because it's not a super big street, right? And so, in my mind, I could conceive of some pretty serious backups at at certain times, so, timing this in and out is going to be critical, and then the
Are you, is it, that's a good question, is it related to congestion on Freel Drive, or actually congestion at the side entrance, or what are?
It's all of the above, yeah, and I'm I'm not going to help you with this, you don't want me involved with this, but I'm just raising this as as an issue and kicking the tires. Final, final thing tonight on this part, we can do the best up here at trying to kick the tires on this, but lest anyone who's watching this thinks that we have any experience in this, we don't, we are way over our skis in this. And so, really to the HDR people, as well as you folks, we have to know that you're looking at best practices, and and we want to be leveraging the the lessons from other communities that have done this recently, and so, could you, I don't know if HDR wants to talk about this a little bit, but, could you give us just sort of a thumbnail sketch of of how you go about designing this in light of best practices, could you give us like a one-minute, is that possible?
Katie, you want to?
Sure.
Yeah.
Because that that would be super helpful for the community who's watching this, and for us, just to have a sense of, this, this isn't just, you sit in the, around with a clipboard and say, how are we going to do this, there's, there's a knowledge base that is drawn upon to do this, could you just give us an overview of that?
Yeah, definitely. So, I guess I'll start at a site level, so, with transfer stations and the various components, I guess Scale House is a great example of something like our team brings.
Can you, could you bring your mic, I'll show it to you, please, and, thank you.
Okay, yeah. So, we have a lot of experience with Scale Houses, transfer stations, and pretty much facilities, almost just like this one, both nationally, that we have our our facilities lead on on this team with us, and then also regionally, so, within Iowa, we've worked on facilities, you know, just even within the last year, that have similar layouts, you know, looking very carefully at traffic layouts and queuing distances. Scale Houses, you might have seen that little kind of snippet of a detail on the previous slide, where just having a scale attendant, being able to reach someone who's trying to pay from a scale, that's, you know, the level of design that, you know, definitely isn't, isn't always there, that you can go to a lot of facilities where it just doesn't quite line up right, and because we work on these all the time, and, you know, we we have our our checklist, okay, we have to look for this, we have to look for this, I think I'm maybe spinning my wheels, but, yeah, these are, these are facilities that we work on a lot, and we definitely are bringing those lessons learned to to this.
Well, we appreciate the partnership with HDR, we have one opportunity to do this right, and it's a huge investment of our dollars into this, and so, having a sense of the process that goes into this is super helpful, so that was exactly what I was hoping for, thank you.
Can you go to, just back to the site, I had a couple of questions also, just the site plan? So, I asked this this afternoon, I just want to make sure, are you, is staff comfortable with the size of this site and what we're expecting and wanting to accomplish on here? You know, Tim brought that up, and I think that you really have worked hard to try and get the traffic flow and the turnaround, but as Tim said, we have one chance to get it right, I just want to make sure that you guys are comfortable, this is going to, you know, work well, I think maybe you can just comment, Justin, you had, you had some great responses this afternoon, on what maybe some things might have to be tweaked a little bit in terms of what we're, some potential compromises, you know, might be, so if you wanted to, I think council wants assurance that you're comfortable, yep, the site is, you know, would you like more land? Always would like to have more land, you know, but the point is, is that, so we don't have a situation where they're going down the road and doing design and say, oh, this is not going to work, better hear that now, or just say, we're trying to basically push a square peg into a round hole.
Sure, I I'll try to remember my responses from this afternoon, I'll do my best.
I'll cue you again in case you don't know.
But but I think the the important thing is, you know, we we need to take care of the waste for the community, and to do so today and also into the future, and I think what we have for land on this site can can do that. The things where we will have challenges, excuse me, is, I mentioned it earlier, is some of our yard waste area is probably smaller than what would be ideal, but it's not something that we can't work through, we might have to operationally do things a little bit different than what we would normally do, but there's there's nothing wrong with that. The areas that we may look to grow in is, as our recycling grows, that that small customer convenience area is a great example of, we've left some space to where we can grow that as necessary. We believe our tipping floor, for the most part, it should be, it shouldn't have a ton of material on it, because we're transferring it pretty regularly, but we have to plan for the what-ifs. So I believe we have the the site size to to accomplish what we need to do, we have opportunities to the north, we have an option on that, on that land just north of the stormwater you see on the on the left side there, you know, if we were to get that that place, or that that parcel, what we would look at is maybe some of our equipment storage would move around, we could look at things like maybe moving the yard waste a little bit, and even talk, start talking about compost, and food waste diversion, all that sort of stuff, those things are the things that we would love to grow, but maybe we can't do it day one. And that's okay, because we need to make sure that what we're doing is taking care of the waste we have right now, and then find those opportunities of how we grow into that, as we get this facility working and moving towards the future.
And then, just the other question, would you explain, you showed the tunnel, I think it's important for council to understand, you know, just what's going to happen in terms of where you're, where you're going to have the loading area, because what's shown on the picture is at grade, and would you explain what the difference is?
Correct, so, I'm going to try to move my mouse here if you can see it, so the tunnel that the mayor's referring to is right here in the transfer station, so as you look, if you're standing at this little crossroads, this Y, the the path to the right will actually come uphill into the facility. So, right now, we're still at the conceptual design phase, but if you think about it, we need about 15 feet of clearance, so if you went up eight feet to hit the tipping floor, you would go down seven feet to hit the tunnel area, to ensure that we can get trucks through there and to load them from the top. So you're going to have an area that's depressed on that site. Yes, there are concerns about stormwater and rain and and snow and ice control events, so there will be, there will be slopes on those, but those are challenges that every transfer station that has a tunnel has. So these, this isn't something that's unique to us, but I want to also encourage council that, even since our meeting this afternoon, we, we as staff have talked about maybe there's ways to minimize some of this, based off some of the comments you gave us there, that we can look at ways to minimize some of that, so we don't have such operational challenges. But that's something to think about, is that this transfer station will be sitting up on a little bit of a hill there, and then we'll have a tunnel that goes underneath it.
Yeah, yeah, I would just, again, express, if we can eliminate that, and not have a grand under the railroad pass, where you have, you know, having to deal with it with pumps and drains and that kind of stuff, if that could be accomplished, that would be spectacular. I know you have only so many feet, which is constrained somewhat by the site, from a standpoint of amount of, you know, runway, but, we'll just, we'll turn it over to staff and HDR, and I think we've made our point that, if you can eliminate that, because we just, I hate relying on things that are mechanical to deal with issues that become an issue, and I just, you know, I just don't think, I want to see Mark out there with his shovel, just having to scoop, no, just, oh, wait, you have something that you can use, you can dry it in, right?
Very good, all right, okay. So, I'm going to skip back ahead here, we were talking about the 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 costs, the fees, this is, this is the other part of we need to think about. So as we mentioned, the per capita, I'm going to go to this slide right here, so, important to note that a financial model was built, and this takes it out that 20-year period, our current tipping fee is at $75 per ton, and the model places an emphasis on the tipping fee, so it's very sensitive to that, on all the rest of the costs, we keep the per capita the same, it's still 1050 per resident for any one of our partner communities. Now, as their population changes, in every census, their, what they would owe us would change, but we're not changing that rate in this model. So all that comes down to a tipping fee of $95.11, and I want to point out that, out of other transfer stations across the state of Iowa, while this isn't the highest, it's maybe in the upper third, maybe the upper tier of it, but it's not the most expensive. So, we we need to acknowledge that we are transferring our waste 72 miles one direction in order to to tip it, and that's the the challenge that's set before us. Construction and demolition is also set at $120 per ton, we would look at taking some of that C and D material, and being able to transfer it to Carroll as well. That material is obviously not terribly beneficial to our recycling process, but it's something we do need to look at, and we think that a higher tonnage fee is appropriate for handling that waste. One thing that I really want to point out is this, this this thought of a pay-as-you throw model. So as you able to recycle more, as you're able to divert more from your waste stream, you should pay less because your tipping fee will be less, that's the reason we have scales there, that's the reason we want to really look at this, it really turns into a user fee a little bit, trying to modify behaviors for customers that will help us in the long term not to have to transfer as much. So we've really kind of looked at that in this model, and and way our tipping fee is set up. With this, on this screen, you see we have, we are estimating 2.75% inflationary increase across a 20-year period. The thing I'll caution on this is that, we would need to see what our our expenses and revenues are annually, before we would say this is exactly what we do, just like we would with any other utility, we would bring recommendations to you, but in order to model this, we had to take a a look at something that would, that would at least show it raising as we moved along the the model period. Part of what it's doing on this screen here is very much the the operating fund, looking at 20% of our operating fund, having that in reserve at any one time.
I, no, you're all right, I just, I had a question about tipping fee for recyclables versus non-recyclables. You said we want to try to guide behavior through the use of strategic tipping fees, I guess, right?
Sure.
And so, but haulers will be bringing loads of both to the transfer station, and so are you envisioning that there would be less or no tipping fee for loads of recyclables and and a tipping fee, or more of a tipping fee for non-recyclable solid waste?
So I think, I think the thing to think about, that this model was really trying to pull out, is, we would have single-stream recycling across the community, and there would not be a tipping fee charged, because the city would maintain and control it. The city would say, we would provide you a cart, the, we would have a a hauler possibly pick, and this is a model that we came up with, we have to bring this to council, obviously, but, a hauler would pick it up, and it would tip it on our floor, and then we would take the revenues from that.
But the, I see, but so for the loads of recyclables, there would not be a tipping fee in the current, in the model you're proposing?
Not, not for any of our partner agencies, now, if someone like.
There would be, there would be a, there would be a charge to, in order to pay for that curbside service.
Yeah, to the customer, but not to the haul, no tipping fee to the hauler in the same way that we do.
Correct, it would, the the hauler would be paid through the, we we would have revenues from charging a fee to the resident, that would cover the cost of the collection, the amortized cost of the cart, and the shortfall generated as a result of disposal.
I see, okay, thank you, no, that helps a lot, thank you.
Can I ask something that follows on that, maybe? In thinking about the recyclables, I'm not sure how we avoid as a city having fleet vehicles dealing with recycling, if we're bringing recycling back from Carroll, and this is what keeps going through my head, so, show me my ignorance, how do we avoid having to provide vehicles in this model that we do not currently use?
For collection?
No, well, for, if we have recyclables that we're going to be selling, is there the assumption that somebody is coming in from somewhere else to purchase those and remove them? If we are bringing recyclables from Carroll on a return trip, who's making that trip? Is that the hauler, or is that us? I'm not, I'm not following our involvement.
That's us, right, that's us, because a part of this facility, we're going to invest in trucks and trailers, and we have the staff that's going to drive them, and so, the staff will, will drive the shredded MSW loads to Carroll County, and will drive the empty trailers back. If there are recyclables at Carroll County that they can load in a truck after we've emptied the the solid waste out of it, and we can bring it back to our facility, then we would do that, but, our staff and our trucks, our semi-trucks, would then also haul recyclable materials from our facility to the recycling endpoints in Des Moines.
So when we're talking about the tipping fee, we're talking about the fee to tip in our facility from the haulers who are coming from our partners, we're not talking about the tipping fee in Carroll County. That's a different fee, right, that's being charged to us as a city, not being charged to our partner haulers.
Correct, the haulers, the haulers in this community and in our partnering communities, they are going to arrive at our facility with their load of MSW, and we are going to charge them our tipping fee of $95.11. We will have a contractually arranged tipping fee with Carroll County, that we will be charged when we go unload a semi-trailer full of all of that consolidated solid waste at the Carroll County landfill.
Okay, so.
The cost for disposing at Carroll County is built into, we're paid back by our tipping fee here.
Okay.
So, so the hauler doesn't pay twice, or something like that.
Yeah, and then the other question is, do we need fleet vehicles that we do not currently own, and where do they factor into this pricing model?
We're buying $2 million worth of vehicles and trailers as a part of this project.
It's it's in the model, built in the financial model.
Thank you, that's much clearer.
Okay, so, on the screen now is.
I'm so sorry, go back one slide, so, I've got your materials, and, by the way, if people who are watching this who want And by the way, if people are watching this who want to have this report, where do they find this report? Is it on the website somewhere?
It would be under the, um, agenda, the agenda minutes. They can get it there. We don't have it posted anywhere on the website yet.
Okay. I mean, that, there may be people interested in this. I, one small question on the reserve fund assumptions, um, and, and maybe it's in here. So for the, it just wasn't clear to me. So the reserve funds, is this for operational expenses or for capital improvements? Are we building that into this model?
It is, so it is for, probably you could look at it as both. Um, it, it can be something for, let's say, um, fuel takes a dramatic increase and we don't have that budgeted, uh, during a, a certain year. This operational fund will help us to absorb some of that. Or if we had a, a large capital project that we need to do that, um, maybe makes sense, we could look at the fund balances. Cause maybe we've, we've been able to build up more than what we need, um, and, and our rates have changed. So it would, it would look at both of those, like we do with the current resource recovery right now. We have a resource recovery fund. When we look at funding capital improvements out of there, we also look at that fund as well. So it'd be, it'd be the same, um, same kind of thought process.
I'm just the sounding board here tonight. So I agree with everything you've said. I think there's good reason for a reserve fund, but my, my feedback would be, I think that there's two different legitimate buckets. We're building a facility that we know in time will need, uh, capital expenditures. So I guess I would like to consider bifurcating the amounts that are for reserves for the operation and those dollars that are set aside for when we need replacement equipment. And we've got ample examples. Our current facility is very expensive to maintain. I think it would be prudent for us to have a separate fund on that capital side. I don't know if HDR has thoughts on the modeling side. Is that, do you, do you lump these together or do you separate them?
Um, I think it's, you know, different places do them differently. So sorry, go ahead.
We, we treat this like an enterprise. It's, it's, it's one, it's, it's one bucket, right? Just like we have a, an electric fund, the whole electric utility, one big bucket.
I know, I understand that.
And we handle, we handle the capital and the O and M out of the same bucket.
So you see, you always ask us do long range financial planning. You know, Doncom does that, Water and Bush Control does that. We, we try to project out what our operating costs are going to be and then we look at our capital improvement plan and what that's going to be. And then we look at our expenditures, operating expenditures, and then the revenue we need. So we'll have enough money to handle the capital improvements that are approved by the council and the operating costs. It's one fund. It's one fund that's there.
So for example, if you, if you take this, this chart that's here. So every year when we go through the process of budgeting and preparing the capital improvements plan, we have a similar model, right? That looks at all of our anticipated revenues and expenditures for the operating and all of our anticipated expenditures related to capital. And so if Mark says in year five of the CIP, we need to spend a million dollars on some piece of equipment that is going to need to be replaced, we plug that into that model. And then we evaluate, okay, with, with the assumptions that we have, with the tipping fees that we have and the other fees that we have set for revenues and what our expectations are for expenditures, how, how well at the end of that period of time, uh, are we going to be able to cover our expenses and maintain our reserve? And if it appears that we're going to be below that target, then we have to talk about a rate increase. So we do that on an annual basis to make sure that, uh, we're informing our decisions that we put in front of you as the city council at budget time about what rate increases should be adopted. But it's all one pot.
And that's responsive. I, I'm not going to fixate on, on whether it's one pot or two pots as long as the thought process is there that we're addressing the, the capital side. We've got excellent examples in Ames. The state doesn't, I don't mean to be disrespectful to the state, but we don't put money into maintenance on our, our buildings at Iowa State the way that I would, would want them to. And so there's a lot of deferred maintenance. We can't do that with these buildings, right?
Yeah. I just want to tell you, we handle, we have the same challenge and I appreciate you bringing it up for every utility we have. We take that into account. I can assure you, we do.
And I just thought it was helpful.
Handle those differently, I wouldn't suggest you do it. We, that's at the top of our list and we make sure we, we account for operating expenditures and capital in our financial plan.
And I appreciate that. I just wanted to tease out that, when we have that reserve fund assumptions, um, I just want to tease out that both, both components were there. Thanks for those answers.
Appreciate it. Important, important concept that we, we want to adhere to.
So the big ticket here, um, this is the cost of the transfer facility and the site development. Um, what you see here, um, this does not include the, the property purchase. The property purchase cost is in the model, so I don't want you to think it's not. But this is the, the construction, um, and, and building of the R3C campus, the, the general layout that we showed you tonight. Um, the one thing I really want to draw your attention to is, um, see if I can use my mouse here again. This $1.185 million there. That includes reusing our existing shredder, our existing drum magnet and one existing eddy current separator from the current resource recovery facility. That's important as we looked at the financial model here to say that we need something that is, um, not incredibly high on our tipping fees and we need to ensure that what we're doing is in alignment with the rest of the costs across the, um, the city. So we looked at reutilizing that stuff. That includes some, some major maintenance on it before it's moved out and brought over and includes installation costs for that as well. But I just wanted to make council know that, that is the one area that we looked at, um, of reusing some existing, um, some existing equipment from the facility.
And can you remind us how long you expect the life of that equipment to be that we are going to reuse?
Yeah, our, um, I'll do my best here. I would say our, our drum magnet and our eddy current separator are fairly new. They're in good shape. Our, um, our shredder has a lot of hours on it. So we would pull that out. We would redo the motors. We would redo the bearings in it. Uh, we just, council just approved, uh, the countercomb door that we just purchased for it. So that, um, likely has a 10 to 12-year lifespan before we need to do something major with it again. Um, but we feel pretty confident that we can rebuild it to that point.
Okay. Thank you.
So to, to finish up here, um, you know, kind of the next steps, and there's one more slide that will have some more information for you. But, um, if everything looks okay and we can move forward, what we anticipate is, um, some design development. We would, um, bring, uh, we begin to negotiate a scope for final design with HDR, um, looking at 2026 construction and opening facility in spring of 2027. Um, so that's kind of the general timeline and Brian's going to go through a few more details for you here on the next slide.
Yeah. So, um, we have about 24 months before we need to be opening the doors on this facility. 24 months tops. Uh, so we have a lot of work ahead of us and it's something that, uh, Justin, Mark and I are going to be spending considerable amounts of time every day between now and 2027 working on to get this going. So, uh, some of the next steps that we have, uh, on July 8th, uh, we're going to be bringing back to the city council, uh, in agreement with Carroll County Solid Waste Commission for the disposal of, uh, the, uh, solid waste in the landfill. Um, we have negotiated, I think, uh, something that's satisfactory to the staff between us and Carroll County, uh, but it has to also go before their commission. We're working with them to expedite a telephonic meeting, uh, so that we can, uh, get their approval on the back end of that, um, prior to us closing on the sale of the properties on Freel Drive. And that's scheduled for July 18th. In addition, uh, at the earliest, uh, July 22nd, we, uh, we will have a discussion, uh, with the city council about, uh, the initial parameters around curbside recycling and the ideas and concepts into how that would work. Uh, we wouldn't necessarily be asking you for any decisions at that point, but we would want to introduce you to the concepts and, and get your preliminary impressions of it. Another component that we need to work on in the next couple of months is finalizing the partner agency 208E agreements and determining which of the other communities in Story County that we've historically partnered with are going to participate in the future of the system, uh, or if they are going to go their own way and find an alternative for the disposal of their solid waste. Uh, so we need to work on revisions to the agreements to ensure that, uh, the term of those agreements matches the term of the debt that we would issue in order to finance the facility. So we have some predictability. And then, um, as Justin mentioned, we need to work on developing, um, we need to work on an agreement to develop the detailed design drawings and, uh, the bidding documents for the construction of the facility. And then a separate component to this project is, uh, the paving of Freel Drive, which we plan to do, um, uh, the design work for, uh, in-house. And so we're going to be working on that with Public Works Engineering Staff, uh, later this summer and fall. So ultimately, uh, with those initial steps, we need to understand if all of this information that we've presented to you tonight, uh, it gives you pause or concern. Uh, or if you're comfortable with the general set of services that we've outlined, the, the general concept for how the facility would lay out, uh, and the fee structure that we proposed. Um, it's important to note in the council, in the staff report, there's information about a variety of potential, uh, additional things that may occur that would put downward pressure on the tipping fees. So we have a grant application in for up to $5 million, uh, for equipment that would be, uh, put to use in this facility and would offset some of our expenses that we would otherwise have. Uh, there are a couple of additional revenue sources that we have not yet, uh, delved into the, into the details regarding. Uh, we have to work with Carroll County about the prospect for mutually beneficial backhaul of materials and what that might look like from an economic standpoint. Uh, and we also need to decide, uh, some other components to the, uh, to the facility that may, uh, reduce costs. So, um, I would view the tipping fee that was presented here tonight as perhaps a ceiling to what we would expect to see in the tipping fees barring some sort of, uh, unforeseen, uh, issue. Um, and the question is whether that is something that's palatable to the council. We've attempted to calculate what that might look like to a residence bill. It's very difficult to do that with any kind of confidence because, uh, we are insulated from that process, right? Uh, we charge a tipping fee to the haulers. The haulers have the tipping fees as a component of their expenses, but they also have labor. They have fuel. They have equipment. They have other expenses. And all of that then rolls into what they charge a resident. Uh, so we believe that a typical three-person, four-person household, uh, throwing away 75 pounds worth of, of garbage every week, uh, is going to see a disposal cost increase of about $3 and change. Uh, whether they see that, uh, whether the hauler absorbs that, uh, or if the hauler charges them more than that is, is really between them and their hauler. Now, there are potentially some offsets because we would expect this facility to be more reliably open and available to the haulers, uh, than our current facility is because we have occasional downtime or diversion days where the haulers need to transfer directly to Boone County landfill. And that's expensive for them because of the, the staff time and the, and the equipment time necessary for that. So there may be some offset there, which is why, again, it's difficult to determine the, uh, exact impact that this might have on a resident. But we've done our best to help you understand that.
Brian, could you, I think you, either staff report mentioned or we mentioned in conversation, is there some kind of a requirement by Carroll County that we have to offer or need to offer curbside recycling? And if so, does that also extend to all of our partner communities? Would, would they also have to do that?
So right now, our process, and Mark can weigh in on this too, but our, our process, um, with the resource recovery facility is, uh, we, we divert a significant amount of material from the landfill through the recycling and through the creation of refuse drive fuel. Uh, so we are in the highest possible level of diversion from the landfill. Uh, with no longer producing refuse drive fuel, we need to ensure that we are meeting the diversion requirements of the DNR. And so if we are unable to do that, uh, through the system that we would construct, we need to, uh, implement alternative methods like curbside recycling to be able to hit those targets. If we do not hit those targets, then we're subject to higher tipping fees for disposal at the landfill because we would be charged higher fees by the DNR. So it's very important to us financially that, uh, we do the right thing and we divert materials from the landfill through recycling. We will have to discuss with the partnering communities, uh, what exactly their, uh, diversion efforts look like and how we can measure them because we need to, uh, ensure that we're, we're including those in our calculations for what we would report to the DNR. Um, it may not look the same in all of the communities, but we need to have discussions with them about how that exactly that would play out.
I had a question about the 208E agreements with other communities. Um, if they weren't to join us in this endeavor and say hypothetically, they all went a different route, um, does that help our costs or hurt them?
I think you were saying the estimate for the garbage or the refuse is 70,000 or it's going to go down. Because the size of the building, can that be downsized? So that would save money in both capital and operations. Can you do that? What percentage of the, of the total amount that comes in gross is from, uh, from the, uh?
So we, I, I believe, um, I believe we're over 70%, City of Ames is over 70% of the refuse, um, MSW that comes into the, the waste stream. So there might be some opportunities, um, to reduce a, a little bit, but I don't think it's, it's such that it would have a dramatic impact on what we're doing. What, what you would see is we would have fewer trucks on the road. We would divert a little bit less. Um, what I would encourage you to say, to look at is that, um, that area on the tipping floor that we need for the, the what-if scenario, that would grow in that, in that, um, in that scenario. So I don't, um, I don't believe there'd be a, a lot of, of changing in what we did in this design. It'd be more operational costs would go down, but our tipping fee is likely not to change a lot because our tipping fee is really driven by our operational costs now. And a lot of that operational cost is the hauling to Carroll County.
Yeah. You, you'd have, you'd have a reduction in expenses. You'd also have a reduction in revenues, both on the tipping fee and the per capita. I'm not sure if we could say confidently tonight whether it would be a wash, but it, it could be.
Sure. Yeah. I was curious. I, I figured there would be pros and cons, or you know, the costs and, and savings both. And then, uh, we haven't yet have a, we don't yet find, have a finalized agreement with Carroll County. And I hate to ask this, but what in, in a worst case scenario, if the Carroll County Solid Waste Commission came back and said, actually on second thought, no thanks, what's our backup plan? What, sorry, maybe I shouldn't even vocalize that, but what's the?
Legitimate question.
What's the backup plan to that?
Well, as, as of right now, there, there is not a backup plan. As, as you're, I think, well aware, we have negotiated and talked with many landfills. Um, so there are very few that really want to partner with us in the way that we are working with Carroll County right now. I feel very confident that we will have Carroll County, uh, agreement. But there are, we would have to re-engage other partners again. And we would likely, I, I would, I would say we would, we would probably find a home for it, but the terms and the, how it would happen may not be, uh, I don't think would be as beneficial as what we're currently pursuing with Carroll.
Sure.
So, um, I think that would be the backup plan if Carroll County comes back on, uh, July 8th and says, no, thank you. Um, this facility still is necessary. We need to then work on the final disposal area. Um, but at that point in time, council would probably need to understand that, do we want to close on that land without having a place for it to go? That's a difficult conversation we'd probably have to have.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. It's, yeah, and I certainly hope, I mean, I trust that, you know, that, um, you've had discussions with them that are, you know, leaving us where we feel that's not going to happen, but I'm just curious. Thank you.
What, what are the larger, larger cities that we partner with?
Uh, it's, um, everyone, mainly everyone in Story County, Nevada, Story City, um, Slater, um, Iowa State University, rural Story County, those are the major players that, that we, it's, it's basically everyone in Story County with the exception of, of Sheldon, I think Collins and Colo.
And Huxley.
Um, Huxley is, yes, as well. Sorry, I forgot Huxley. I'm going to do a bad job if I don't name them all, so.
All right. So the questions are, is everyone comfortable with the services that are being provided? The tipping fee, is there anything that comes out that people say? provided, the tipping fee? Is there anything that comes out that people say, oops, doesn't meet our expectations? We need to raise a red flag or a yellow flag? Not the checkered flag yet, we're getting there.
Correct.
So what is, does anyone have any concerns or objections at this point in time?
I don't know that I have a major concern, but I'm somewhat surprised that we are moving equipment from the previous facility to the new facility, which I assume means there will be a bunch of downtime where we can't process anything? Is that?
So what, yeah, what would happen during that timeframe was the transfer facility would be up and operational by that time. We would stop processing RDF at the Resource Recovery Center. Any MSW that comes in would not be shredded at that point in time. So we envision this is a two-to-three, maybe four-week process. To get, we would have everything in place, ready to go, just to move the material. The longest process part of that is removing it out of the existing facility and then rebuilding the existing shredder, going through that. Of course, we would plan all that out in advance, but that first two, three weeks might just be direct transfer.
Yeah, the, if you want to go back on the slides, the, the way that the interior of the facility will be designed, we would have the option to either run the MSW through the shredding and processing, or push it directly unshredded into the transfer trailers. So if the equipment around the periphery is being worked on because of an unplanned issue or because of maintenance, then we still have the ability to push directly into the trailers and keep moving. And that's what we'd be doing for the first couple of weeks. So that is one of the trade-offs with using, with reusing the equipment. We wouldn't be able to turn the key and have it all running on day one, but we believe it'd be a pretty short time.
Thanks.
Are there any questions, reservations?
I mean, I love the fact that we did this with primarily our own staff in partnership with HDR. Many communities couldn't begin to do this with their own team, so hats off to the, all the people who were involved in this. I did want to, I was curious, in terms of just seeking input, did we get input from our trash haulers themselves about their thoughts on, and I like the word used, queuing, and how that would work? Did we talk to them as well?
That's our, actually, our next step. We talked about that today. We wanted to get your input first to say if this was not something you wanted to move forward with, we would obviously have to look at other options. But now that we believe, if it's what you believe is right, that's going to be one of our next steps, is to get their input on what this looks like. And all that will tie into that design development as we start working on final design plans. And what you see on a screen may not be exactly what comes back.
Right.
At final design, and that's, that's kind of the whole point. So we will engage them.
Yeah, my only concern, I've mentioned this like twice now, but just, it just doesn't seem like there's enough space from the scales. It just seems like you're going to have backing up onto Freel. It's kind of like Starbucks, you know, people are backed up way into the Lincoln Way for Starbucks. And I just want to be cognizant of how that works, but I'll leave that to you guys to sort of figure that out.
There's more space coming in right now than there is currently at the Resource Recovery Plant. With the roads coming in, if you think about the Resource Recovery Plant, there's not a lot of backup onto Center Drive during that time. So I think, I think we've got enough queuing in there to make it work.
Okay. Otherwise, great job. Thanks for this presentation.
Rachel, any questions for tonight, or you're good? Amber?
Yeah.
Ryan, you're good?
Yeah, I like it. Thank you.
Anything else you need? What, do you want a motion or not?
No, we're not asking for anything tonight.
I didn't think you were.
Yeah, what you, what you want. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Gary, Katie, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. All right, move on, number 38. Motion directing staff regarding phasing of the 2426 traffic system at 13th and Grand.
Good evening.
We have a trio of items for you tonight related to the 13th and Grand improvements project. The first of which is some direction regarding the phasing of the project. Quick update on the project, we are, we're pretty much complete with preliminary plans right now. We're slightly behind schedule, but the reason for that is we don't want to compromise in the design. We made a commitment to residents when we showed the conceptual design for this project back in 2020, as well in 2022 with the Grand Avenue corridor study. And we finally got the design in a situation that is in alignment with the previous designs that have been shown, where we understood the impacts to be similar to what was previously presented. So the reason we're coming to you tonight for direction on phasing is because this is such a significant project that the phasing really determines how the final design can be completed, how we coordinate with the adjacent properties on coordinate, on access during the construction. The proposal that we've brought to you is essentially two big phases that would close down portions of 13th Street while Grand Avenue is being worked on. So the best way I can describe it is two T-shaped construction zones, as you see on the screen here. Just to, just to clarify as well, oh, you got it turned. So Justin turned things, so north is up, which always helps. So what you're seeing on the screen right now is while the west two lanes of Grand Avenue are being worked on and are closed, 13th Street to the west side of Grand Avenue would also be closed completely. So you would not be able to get through on 13th Street. We would accommodate traffic on the east side of 13th Street here. It'd be a T-intersection. We'd have a traffic signal that would be running to accommodate those movements and provide safe, safe passage. And then you would have one lane in each direction on Grand Avenue. The next phase would be the flipped version of that, where while you're working on the northbound lanes of Grand Avenue, you'd be working on 13th Street to the east. So again, this is a, it's a significant project for the community. This phasing plan is pretty unique for these projects. The initial phasing plan that our consultant drafted to keep things open involved 12 phases. The downside to that is the time, the expense, and really the delay that both residents and motorists would realize. You know, we, when we try and keep things open, sometimes it's hard to communicate that it's very restricted in being open. The widths are restricted, the accesses are tough, delays usually increase. So that's what we're trying to balance here. We wanted to come and get your approval of this design or recommendations on a different design before we finalize the design, and then also reach out to the adjacent properties, reach out to CyRide as this would directly impact their operations, and really kind of work, work to completion on the design of this project. So if you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Mark. Questions?
Mark, what are the dates, the years for these different phases?
So we would want to accomplish this project in one year. And this phasing plan is the cornerstone of being able to accomplish a project this size in one construction season. So right now, we are anticipating the vast majority of the construction to be in 2027. We'd try and utilize 2026 as proactively as we can. We'd coordinate with the private utility companies, try and have their relocations done ahead of time. We're currently coordinating with our electric department to understand their relocation needs as well, and we'd try and get that done ahead of time. And then one other piece of this is we'd want to try and get the traffic signal, the new traffic signal built before the majority of the roadwork happens. So we need some time to accommodate that as well.
So roughly, what, April through?
April through September. It's going to be the vast majority of a construction season. Hopefully, we can, you know, save a little bit of time there, but it's going to be a significant project.
Yeah, I think, I think you're looking at a six-month time period, just for a rough idea. So April through that, September, October timeframe. I think the other important thing to remember is even in the 12 phases, there's going to be some sort of time where we have to shut it down, because there are utility connects that have to happen in there that just can't happen under traffic. So while it's not ideal, it would have to happen. So we're, we're trying to balance, as Mark said, balance that impact on the, on the motoring public, and also the safety of the workers in the, in the roadways, as well as the safety of the people using those narrowed lanes through that, through that corridor. So that's what we're looking for.
Has there been?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, thought given to bikes and things as well, alternative motorways, like sidewalks and things? I know sometimes when there have been areas shut down, bicyclists get concerned that they don't know what those alternative routes are. So is there?
Yes, yes. We are recognizing all modes here. Nothing's finalized, but what, what you're seeing right now is our sidewalk detour that we anticipate. And we have some markups. We're working through this with a consultant right now, but we're proactively looking at the detours that we have through here, any sort of missing sidewalks and how they might have impacted detours for residents. And we would have that signed, and we'd be pretty aggressive on the press releases as well ahead of the project.
Thank you.
Other questions?
These are traffic counts here, 20,000, 25,000 cars a day?
Yeah, total intersection, yeah. Yep, that's ballpark.
And so, and I looked through the material, are there really options for us that you're giving us? Like, help us understand what, what input you need from us.
Yeah, the options would be pursue a phasing plan like this, or try and keep 13th open for the vast majority of the project, as Justin talked about. While you're paving, while some utility works going on, there's going to be closures at least in some directions. But essentially, if this is too big of an impact for the community, then we can pursue a different phasing plan. That may lead to a two-year project and, and higher expenses for the project and kind of drawing out the impacts for the adjacent residents.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe to put a final point on it, is if this is not acceptable to you, and what you want to see is ensuring that we have at least one lane of traffic in each direction on 13th Street to the maximum extent possible, we would want to know that. We realize this is a really big impact to the community. The community's asked for this for a number of years. So if we can help expedite that, as, as Mark said, that's what we want to do. If we, if we decide we need to keep traffic in one direction, it will have, it will likely be two construction seasons. And we know how two construction season projects go. The community gets tired of it really quickly, so we're trying to balance that to say, can we close it and get it done fast? Or would you, would you rather see us take more time?
So I'm confused because the drawing show, you have, in both phases, you still have one, you have two-way traffic just on the one lane. Is that correct, or did I misunderstand that?
Grand Avenue traffic would be one lane in each direction at all times for the project. 13th Street would be the only section that gets closed.
So if you went to 12 phases, you would also have like one lane of traffic each way on 13th?
Correct.
Thank you.
And does the DOT have any say in this?
The DOT say is, you know, more focused on Grand Avenue with Highway 69 jurisdiction. 13th Street is not a DOT route, so they would really defer to the local agency on the phasing plan for the side streets.
So is it, these are like the hardest things for council to work on, because it's asked us to do a cost-benefit analysis, and we don't really have meaningful pieces to do that with. So it's very conceptual. But we're living with this with Stang currently not having northbound access. So when I go home, if I'm in West Ames, I have to go a long ways around to get home. But this is a little different because if we close down the balloon here, what's different here as opposed to Stang is that we would push that traffic into the neighborhoods, and they're just going to have to embrace that. And it's not going to be pleasant for a while because those roads weren't made for our CyRide. And, and honestly, there are going to be trucks going through those, those alternative neighborhoods. So if, if all things were equal, and I had to choose between two years of construction or one year of hell, I would choose the one year of hell, all things considered, and, and just get it done. I think that, and in this cost savings involved, but it gives us opportunities for rerouting traffic that we wouldn't otherwise have. And has Damian also been involved in these conversations?
He has. Yes, he's been closely involved. And one thing I'd like to mention, the recent resurfacing of Highway 69 performed by the DOT through this, it didn't directly impact this intersection, but the traffic control did. And with one lane in each direction open at all times for both streets during that project, we still saw that increase on the adjacent streets. So I think the reality is that the local side streets are going to see an increase.
Yep.
And we'd like to minimize that as, as much as possible.
And then, I think, I think is my final question. So with this kind of intersection, we have to think police and fire as well. And so as we think about operational aspects of our police and fire, are, have they been involved in the conversations as well?
Yes. We've, we've met with our fire department. Fire Station One is directly east of this location, so they are heavily impacted.
Right, right.
By this. They do feel like the plan that we've presented tonight can be effective for them. We plan on working with them on some of the side streets that they would utilize a little more, a little more often for their responses, and try and do some temporary measures during the project, such as, you know, looking at some of the parking regulations. If a street's double parked, maybe we look at, you know, temporary parking restrictions on one side to accommodate the response vehicles. But overall, they feel like they can adequately serve the area.
Yep. So if all things were equal, I, I would recommend just doing a one year and get it done. Thanks for those answers.
Can you review, what kind of engagement have you had with the community or the residents in this area, just for council's information?
Yep. That'll be discussed a little more here on the following item. The, the engagement that's been had has primarily been through that 2022 Grand Avenue corridor study. And like I mentioned earlier, the design that we've prepared right now is very in line with what was presented as part of that study. That study did quite a bit of outreach for the whole corridor. Our main, the main residents that we got at the meetings were at the intersection of 13th and Grand. So they've, they've seen this design before, and we have another item to essentially approve more outreach as part of some acquisition services.
Just explain that if council supports this, what process is going to be gone through? Because obviously, it's going to really affect those people who have driveways that intersect with the Grand Avenue, but it's
Yes.
Not, no different than other street construction that goes on at times, right?
True. Yep.
Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment. So with the Freddie Court and the SUV apartments, they're catching a lot of flack with the closure of the Stange Road and how it impacted move-out and move-in. Then I also know with 13th, a lot of people on the west side of campus and then in those areas also, they'll take that to get out of town or come in because it's right connected to 35. And so I just would want to think about the consideration of, you know, move-out and move-in weekends and times when it comes to like a full closure, because that'll back up Lincoln Way where you've got all the kids with the dorms and everyone south of campus. And it would just be a lot on Lincoln Way. And so that might be something we need to think about.
Good point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, open public comment. Does anyone want to address council on this topic? Seeing and hearing none. Closed public input. Is there a motion on this item tonight?
Move alternative one.
Second.
Direct staff to proceed.
Which is, just in summary, as, as proposed?
Direct staff to proceed with the attached phasing plan.
Thank you. All right.
And I apologize, just for clarification, is that one year or two years?
It's one year.
One year. Okay.
Those favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carried. All right. Move on to number 39. Resolution approving Iowa DOT traffic safety improvement program agreement regarding a half million dollars for the traffic system capacity 13 and Grand.
So a little background on this item. This project was programmed in the CIP with a total of $700,000 in state grants. This TSEP grant is for $500,000, which is the maximum amount for the TSEP program. Essentially, this program recognizes safety improvements that need to be made. We prepared an application, we're successful in that, and received the that need to be made. We prepared an application. We're successful in that and received the half a million dollars pending approval of the grant. We do anticipate another grant in the amount of $200,000 from the USEP program, also through the DOT. That would come under a separate contract. And then we're also coordinating with them on a 3R grant, which would essentially be geared towards the cost of the project improving their mainline pavement. That cost will be determined once we're a little farther through the design, but we would anticipate a grant for that program as well. So hopefully this isn't the last of the grants that you'll see.
Questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion on the item.
Move Alternative One.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Betcher?
Aye.
Pity Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
And I have number 40, Resolution Proving Amendment Number One To The Engineering Contract.
So when we brought WHKS on board, WHKS of Ames on board, the services only include engineering. When we solicited for the project, we received a wide range of acquisition services costs. So we felt it was prudent to make our decisions solely based on the engineering costs and move through preliminary design and then solicit acquisition services once we knew our impacts were a little more solidified. So that's where we're at right now in the design process. WHKS has prepared an amendment to their services to bring JCG onboard for acquisition. Right now, we anticipate a scope of 19 parcels requiring easements. There are two properties as well in the northwest quadrant of the intersection that have been anticipated for full acquisitions since the initial conceptual design was done. This amendment does not include services for that. We're still working through some different funding strategies to help with those services. So this is just the other easements related to the project that you see primarily along Grand Avenue. We've done a pretty good job of really minimizing our impacts along 13th Street, specifically to the east. That has reduced from the original concepts that were shown. But the services would just be for voluntary acquisition right now. That's what you'd be approving. It also includes some additional meetings with the property owners. Typically, when we follow the Iowa DOT guidelines for easement acquisitions, it can be a fairly cold and sterile process for the homeowners. City staff's pretty removed from that process so that we do receive a fair value on those easements. To kind of mitigate that feeling for the property owners here, we want to start this whole process off with a kickoff meeting where we get all the impacted residents, city staff, our consultant, WHKS, and JCG acquisition team in a room, have faces to the names for everybody and can kind of go over the process and what they could expect over the next few months and the timeframes and who will be reaching out in what, in what part and initiating contact. So I think that'll be extremely helpful versus some prior projects that we've done with DOT acquisition. So that's part of the services here. And then there'll be significant one-on-one meetings to determine those impacts and really make sure everyone's comfortable with what we anticipate the project impacting.
Mark, I just want to follow up a question. So the diagram that we have shows issues pertaining to the right-of-way, but we have city utilities running in those areas. And so I assume that this project is going to require relocating those existing different utilities that we've got there further north or south, depending on which side. Will we also have to work with legal department and so on to also relocate those utility easements?
So most of the utilities, the private utilities, I should say, are within the right-of-way. So they are at jeopardy of relocating at their expense based on the construction project. There are also some city utilities in the right-of-way, your storm sewer, water main, sanitary sewer. The project will include new water main. Through previous years, this intersection was missed with some water main improvement projects, knowing that this project was coming. So the city will be doing water main improvements with the project. We'll be doing some spot repairs with the sanitary sewer, but not a full comprehensive repair of it. And then the storm sewer as well will be moved in some locations to handle the new curb lines. The private utilities, we'll coordinate extensively with as we finalize the design and understand the impacts directly related to them. And then they will be provided a schedule to handle their own relocations, hopefully in advance of the project so that we don't realize any unforeseen delays caused by the private utilities. The other piece of that is the electric side. So electric's currently working with a consultant to understand their relocation needs for the corridor. A lot of utilities are overhead right now on the power lines. So electric will reach out to them if they're on their existing power poles and let them know that the power poles are moving, they need to be off the power poles. And then they probably have the ability to come back onto the new power poles, depending on how the timing works out.
So, and that's like super helpful, but so I guess my question is, we have a third party who's going to be helping us with acquiring easements for the right-of-way, but we're, as a city, we'll be working with the homeowners directly on the utility easements. Is that correct?
So...
I was just trying to clarify, this third company, the company's not, they're not going to be working on utility easements, that's going to be on us?
Are you specifically referencing like private utilities, your media com?
No. Our, I apologize if I asked the question poorly. We've got existing easements, they're going to have to move. So is that something that this third party, I just want to make sure we're not missing this, that the third party, their focus is exclusively on the access, the public highway easements and not the utility easements? That's something that we're going to do. I'm just, that's all I want to clarify.
Yeah, we really don't have much for utility easements. Most of our utilities are within the right-of-way and we would anticipate them being relocated within the same right-of-way or the easements that are acquired as part of these services.
Okay, so the existing easements are sufficient in light of where we're going to be moving them. They're still going to be in the easement area?
Correct.
Okay. And then you mentioned the overhead. Are there opportunities that we're looking at to bury? I would love to see more of these utilities, the electric will go underground if that's possible. Is that something that we're weighing cost benefit analysis on?
Yes, yep. We've had initial conversations on that. In preliminary conversations with electric, it seems like the cost benefit leans towards maintaining overhead lines in this area. Underground is very expensive. I've asked to try and receive some harder numbers on that with the consultant that they're doing some design. The other part to consider is going underground typically works very well when you have long stretches. That's really the payback in the underground expense is the middle of that portion. The transition from overhead to underground can be problematic, especially in a corridor like Grand Avenue where you have maybe four feet between the curb and the sidewalk and we have existing power poles there. To end those overhead power poles and go underground, we need to put in significantly larger poles to support that. And we're kind of chasing space where you don't have the room in the line, in the alignment that the lines are on to put upsize poles on. So we'd have to, we'd increase our scope of impact by trying to go underground here. And we only have a couple properties in the middle that you'd be gaining the advantage on.
Okay. This is a great and thoughtful answer. Obviously, you've given that some thought. Thanks for those answers.
Mark, does that mean that we don't have to be concerned about whether there are still tanks under that southeast quadrant property?
So we're aware of that. All of our design has been done to accommodate that. The water main design is a special material to accommodate that. The trenches that get constructed have essentially stops every couple hundred feet to mitigate any contaminant that may find a trench and try and navigate down it. So all of the design that we've done has been in recognition that we do have leaking underground storage tanks there. And that will be part of our permitting process as well through the DNR.
Thanks.
Weren't those tanks pulled? Are there, those are, there are still tanks?
There were or not?
Yeah, we still have plumes, significant plumes in the soil in that area.
Were the tanks pulled?
I'm not sure specifically.
We would know that. It's on, it's on a state database whether those tanks are pulled.
We can find that. Whether they're there or not, the plumes will dictate the design of the project. The soil is contaminated, whether or not that tank's still there.
Is this a less site?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? So the services that WHKS will provide is actually contacting the residents, explaining the situation, drawing up legal descriptions, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
And if there's any kind of compensation, if anything, given?
Yep, they'll prepare all of that, yep.
And then can you just comment briefly on the properties that need to be acquired? So you're saying that's still being negotiated with services for that? Is that right? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we're strategizing on the best way to move forward with acquisition services on those properties. Specifically, it's the northwest corner, it's the church and duplex directly west of the church. Based on prior conversations, we believe that they are in favor of relocation, but we certainly want to make sure that we handle that respectively and work through all the necessary steps that we need to. The program has, the project is programmed with some funding to do that, but we're also leveraging, we're looking into leveraging some other city funds that may be advantageous for multiple departments.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion on this item.
I would move we approve Amendment Number One to the contract.
Second.
All right, move in second. Roll call.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Pity Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll reconvene back at 8:24. All right, we'll move on to item number 41. Kelly?
Good evening. So this item is in response to a property owner, a developer's request to have the city council consider amending the PED overlay. And we put it on this agenda without having to do a background memo because of some recent conversations related to infill development. So you recently approved the North Dakota Towns Project, and what you see up here is a vacant site right in the center here on Fourth Street, South Fourth Street at the intersection with Washington. So it's another infill site. And the request really is focused solely on infill rather than larger projects that might be in growth areas. So the applicant had been working with staff through an approach on how to develop this property. And because of the Dakota Towns Project and working through that site design and how open space was a factor in that, it became readily apparent as we worked through this site that the project, which is included as an attachment in this report, didn't include common open space. The developers really looking at how they could do individual dwelling units as by attached or... or essentially single-family attached townhome units with no expectation of common area for a sixteen-unit project. So after talking through that with the applicant and saying, well, this will be required under the current ordinance, maybe city council would, would want to at least have a discussion about if that's really the expectation on infill. That's because we had talked about the history of PUDs, which we discussed in this report. When we first created PUDs a few years ago, the thought was they only applied on the periphery of the city. Infill sites weren't really going to be, be an issue. But then we changed the two-acre threshold so that it could be used for infill. And it's starting to become clear, there's certain aspects of the PUD overlay that we need some more direction on as staff. I think applicants and developers need to get a better understanding of, of the expectations of the city council as we move through this. But specifically tonight, this is focused on that one open space standard and it's, it's very straightforward standard. All PUDs must have ten percent of the gross floor area of the site set aside as common area that's accessible to residents. So if you're under fifty units, there's no more description than that. What is it accessible for? How usable does it have to be? Are there any other elements that go into that? None of that's defined, so it's on a case-by-case review. Once you get to a fifty-unit or larger project, there is some higher or greater expectations about the usability of, of that type of space. But in an infill project, it seems very unlikely you're going to get to that fifty-unit threshold. So we're really thinking on these two-acre sites, especially for townhome-type projects, there'll always be well under fifty units. And, and again, tonight we're talking about that sixteen-unit design. So I think the main question that, that you have to ponder here is how do you bring together the two goals that I think we articulated in Plan 2040 to support context-sensitive infill development? Those two things don't always go together. We talked about this a lot when we wrote the PUD ordinance. We did a lot of other things. They won't always work well together and we're going to have to prioritize what that means. So in some ways, the PUD ordinance is, gives a lot of flexibility, but it means it's a case-by-case decision for council. And you need to, to kind of talk through, should we expect small projects to have common open space? What's the trade-off for having that? It's probably maybe a small loss in units. In this case, we think it'd be one unit out of sixteen, maybe two, kind of depends how the developer would want to approach that. The other thing I think on some scale, it is also possibly a burden for an HOA, depending how small the project is, is to have to maintain or have common area. And if it gets really small, is it really usable in the first place? We're not really here to talk about, should a three-unit project have common open space? Should it be twelve? Should it be sixteen? Right now, we're really just focused on, is it a two-acre site? Is it required or not? The applicant or the developer proposed originally, and I'll bring up their site plan, to allow for maybe a text amendment that would consider all types of open space to equate to the ten percent set aside. So in their proposal, which is described as alternative to in this, in this staff report, is to basically broaden it to just be an open space requirement, whether it's public, common, or private open space. So any kind of usable space, any kind of space really, was their proposal to get to that ten percent total. So if I bring up that site plan. So in their, in their initial proposal, what they're saying is essentially anywhere that is not covered with building or paving could be counted towards that ten percent total. So most of the lots have some area, like Lot Four and Five though, it's really more of a front yard only or a street side that's not very private or usable. Versus some of the lots do have the ability to have more private space on their lot. Some of these homes have some element of a backyard. Not all of them have really usable backyards. You can see over here in the southeast corner, Lots Fifteen and Sixteen have no usable space in the rear yard. There's successive retaining walls there. You, you couldn't really do anything in those areas. But Lot Sixteen would have a large side yard. Lot Nine, like some of these have decent private open spaces. Some of them do not. So in their proposal, you would just average that all out and, and decide if the space meets the general objectives of a PUD. But quantitatively, you would calculate all that space. In my opinion, if we went that route, I'm not in favor of, of including something like front yards in that calculation. I think the intent is to really gear the substitute towards usable private space. I don't really feel front yards ever are truly usable kind of private space. They're, they're more aesthetic and buffering for those purposes. So if you go that route, we'd have to work through exactly what that definition is. I give you some of the, the things that we'd have to consider. I, I think we can work through that if that's your alternative with the applicant when it's proposed. We don't have to get into those details tonight. But what staff recommended was that if you want to amend the open space standard, to essentially remove it from all infill sites. I think there's, it depends on your perspective here, I guess. If, if you think an element of private open space is important, it could be a substitute for common space. But if you think that the idea of, of common spaces is not that important, I think you can default to just removing the standard for infill. And then you're back to, again, the case-by-case review. Does the project achieve the objectives of the PUD, which includes a requirement that it has appropriately designed spaces? That will be open to interpretation. Does that mean a deck off of the second story of your, of your townhouse that is a hundred and twenty square feet? Is that appropriate? For many people, it would be. In some cases, it might be a yard that you have access to at the ground level. That, that's the kind of thing that you'd have to work through in relation to the site, the surroundings, and the type of homes if you decide to delete that standard. And then the third alternative we talked about, which I sort of touched on, is that the townhome projects seem to be the ones that are, are what we're seeing in these, these first two infill projects. They require a lot of deviations because you're trying to create a small ownership product on a very small lot. Most of our standards aren't written for that, so it causes deviations. But if you want to support the townhome building type, one alternative would be to just remove the ten percent standard for this type of project. So if you had a, an apartment-based project or something that wasn't an ownership or a, a for-sale possible project, then you would still have to keep the open space. But if you were to do a small lot detached home or you do an attached single-family lot like this, you could be exempt. It kind of depends on how you view that standard. So overall, I think we're talking about open space, but I think it's important to kind of take a step back as the council and say, okay, we're here for open space. I've seen two projects here in the last month. Are there other things that might interrelate with the idea of open space? Are there other things that, that you have comments or questions about that, that might also be relevant to, to a, a review or an update of the PUD overlay in addition to or as an alternative to that open space thing? But right now, the main alternative is again about open space. I think the discussion should really kind of talk about expectations. We had a lot of conversation with the, with the Dakota Towns Project about what do these standards mean? What is usable space? What's an appropriate setback reduction? How should we think about these lot areas as they get reduced to fit the homes? And they're not as big as they would be in a, in an FSRL situation. All of that kind of relates to what kind of space you're creating. And I think that's really the emphasis here is, we want to produce housing. We want it to be of quality. We want it to be a livable environment for the residents. And how do you put all of those things together? That's kind of the, the trick of the PUD, of trying to get to a satisfactory project. And they're all going to be different, but having a good understanding as staff of your expectations will definitely help us guide applicants to better projects that are more successful when they get to public hearing stage. And again, tonight, you're not approving this project, but it's really helpful to see it. So you can kind of talk through different elements of a site plan without having the pressure of actually approving or denying a project.
You, you just said livable. Would you define what livable means? I mean, in terms of place to live in as compared to, I mean, what's, what's the purpose of the open space? And making a livable environment? Because this is, an apartment typically is rented. These are designed to be owner-occupied, right?
I wouldn't say that. I would say that they may be owner-occupied.
Okay.
The names you'll see very common, a project like this have individual investors buy the projects and still rent them, buy the units and still rent them. I wouldn't say these will be six, this will not be sixteen owner-occupied townhomes, and I do not believe that's the case.
Okay.
I think livable is really subjective. I mean, I mean, some residents want to have a yard, you know, they want space. Maybe kids playing outdoors, things like that. Some less so, right? So for some people, a yard is, can be a burden, right, in terms of maintenance? And so I think there are some people in both categories in terms of what they might find livable, so that's a little hard. I would ask, one question I have is, how does what we decide about PUDs affect any that are already in the works? So that, the one on Dakota, for example. Are any changes we would make going to affect what we, I mean, we already were.
So third, Dakota Towns, Dakota Towns, Dakota Towns is third reading tonight. So if that ordinance is approved on third reading and it's published next week, it's approved, it's done. There would be no text amendment that would have a, a look back to undo that approval that I can think of. Yeah, I, I don't expect anything you would change to, to cause the, the Dakota Towns to not be able to move forward if, assuming you approved it on third reading tonight.
Okay.
So what, what other, I know we're just talking about open space, but what other variances are going to be required if this project would move forward as presented?
So I might not have everything captured, but just to, to kind of give you an idea of what we look at for the applicant to get to this proposal. We, we focused on that in the PUD, they could create individual lots if they built a private street. So that's where you see the teed street in here to make those individual lots. They have frontage on a private street. The site constraint really pivoted on where that driveway could occur, so it really had to align with Washington. So, and it functionally works really well for what they needed to do for a private street. So that's how you get to this, this alignment here. So once they got to that, they, they, they took a product that they have built other places and see if it fits on the space that's available. So you get a two-car garaged, I don't remember if these are, I think they're three-bedroom units. I honestly, I don't remember right now. But I think they're two-car garage, three-bedroom units built in other places. And they, they tweak that to kind of fit onto the lot space that's available. So you see in this case, a full-length driveway. But as a result of those full-length driveways for every garage, they also asked for setback reductions. So they reduced the amount of open space so they could have full, full driveways. So for, they could have extra parking and access. The site setbacks are, are reduced to some degree, so they're maintaining at least ten feet between buildings. A two-story building would normally need sixteen feet between buildings, so it is a little bit of a reduction there to have that internal reduction. But the front and side, the front and the rears are the bigger reductions. And then, trying to think through what else there is. Lot size, you can see the lots are averaging roughly twenty-four hundred square feet, maybe a little bit less than that. We would normally require thirty-five hundred square feet of lot area per unit like this. If you were just going to build on a public street, you need to have thirty-five hundred square feet of lot area. And you could do that in a standard residential zone. You wouldn't need to, to do the PUD. So again, going to a townhome with a private street eats up a little bit more space. That comes out of the lot area typically for efficiency purposes. So that'd be the other deviation that I can think of off the top of my head.
So it looks like on both sides of this property, it's not really very clear, but the existing buildings are set back twenty-five foot from the property line. This, they're going to ask for fifteen foot to be, to go to ten foot essentially, to be fifteen foot closer to the sidewalk. And then the underlying zone requires twenty-five foot rear yard and they're going to go down to fifteen. So the point is that, I know tonight, we're just talking about open space. But I just think this is an important, I appreciate the fact that this has brought, been brought up and, you know, for conversation because, you know, there's, this is a, you could say, well, the area in which it's located, you know, is primarily apartments, but the point is the next spot might be someplace else that isn't. And when you have buildings that project fifteen feet farther in front of other buildings, that's, the council's going to have to consider that also as part of a, a variance request, correct?
Don't want to call it variance. They're, they're deviations. A variance, a variance is an actual permit under state code, and that's not what we're doing. So within a PUD, you're allowed to deviate from standards. So, but yeah, so for this proposal, I think the trade-off is pretty obvious. To me, it's, it's very obvious. It's about the driveway design, which dictates that north-south spacing, which led to the front yard reduction. And to be fair, staff said a front yard reduction could be appropriate here. The zone, if you're doing townhomes with front entries and, and stoops that meet the architectural requirements of the zone, maybe that is appropriate to have a reduced setback. We commonly don't really have direction to look at the adjacencies that you brought up. We don't really, again, we don't have a lot of direction within the PUD about when, when is it too much? If this was six feet, is that too much? If it was sixteen feet, is that too much? Like, we, we just don't have direction on that. So you're always feeling that out for the architectural elements and the area around it. I think the, back to the open space component. If you were to change setbacks, obviously you're going to change that set, that opens, that private usable space environment too. It would improve potentially the rear setback options for those homes. The front homes probably lose some space. I don't know that that's always a justification to reduce a front setback to gain private space, but that was part of the equation for this discussion was what kind of space gets created that's usable to a resident. Reducing the front yard creates a little bit more of that rear side yard kind of environment. I don't know that it's substantial. The rear yard's on the back row. If it wasn't for the grade change, I think that would probably be a little bit more meaningful, but there is that grade change on the back of those lots. So the, the full usable space is, is kind of minimal back there.
So, so far the projects we've seen, the, the last two projects is basically, the intent is, is to put as many units as possible on the, on the, on the property. Would that be an accurate assessment?
I would not say that. I just, there's, if I was to say that, I would say you could actually, with deviations, you could build more units here. They could have done all attached units. They could have, there could be more units on this property. There could have been more units on Dakota Towns. That doesn't mean we would support that. Just with the building footprints you see, this is the most you can get, right? So like, they, they could have attached these as four attached units and had five on the front row. They could have had more in the back. So again, it's the most, it utilizes all of the space, but it doesn't necessarily the most units that could be proposed here. They also did in the past have an eighteen-unit apartment project built. They chose not to build that. But from an apartment standpoint, eighteen units is, is essentially the most you can build in this district. You have an eighteen-built, eighteen-unit building limit. So that's why they maxed at eighteen previously. Totally different product here though, and different design.
I'm curious, Kelly, dovetailing with both Mayor's and Brown's question. How many other properties do you think that are similarly situated to this? When we did our inventory during the 2040 plan, there just aren't a lot of these spaces. So as we think through the implications of this, am I right about this?
So this is a little unique because they bought multiple properties and cleared the site probably like seven years ago. So they, they bought dilapidated older homes. This was individual lots. They merged it into this one site. So it's very rare to come across a one-acre vacant flat site in the city. That doesn't exist. But there were homes here before that.
Right.
So is there something that would say that someone couldn't buy four homes on Washington and come back with a similar concept? The zoning would allow it. We haven't seen that happen. This was the only place that happened. There's only a handful of sites in the city where probably land consolidation could lead to an infill project of this size. There's also a couple remnant properties, maybe leftover institutional properties that are always a little bit more oversized than a standard home lot. Those sometimes could lead to a multi-unit project. I think the project on, or the site on Wilson, the old school maintenance garage, that site's just over an acre. That, that owner hasn't exactly formulated a plan. That's something that could be an infill site. But that's an example of where you have a legacy site that's from an institutional use that, that might work as an infill site.
I, I think you said something really important, that what we do tonight could potentially incentivize some redevelopment. And I, I, I think that's absolutely true. I think there could be some other assemblages of properties to take advantage of what we're doing. I am super excited about the prospects of this property. This property has not been maintained. It has, has been full of weeds. It's been a, a snake and rodent refuge for years and an eyesore for everyone who has to live around this. And so the idea of this turn, being turned into townhomes, which we desperately need, I love this. And so the idea of this turn, being turned into town homes, which we desperately need, uh, I love this. And so I think if we can find ways to maximize the number of units on this, that's what I'm interested in.
So can I ask a slightly different question about the 10%? So, um, one of the other goals, of course, of the council has been thinking about climate action related things. So do we end up with a lot of impervious, uh, area by, uh, this type of concentration? And maybe this is a conversation that we've had before, and I apologize if we have, but, um, just thinking about that, we are then, has the discussion been had that on a lot that's two feet, I mean, I'm sorry, two acres or less, that we're not as concerned about that, that that's not the place that we want to be concerned about having open areas?
Can you go back just clarify for me? At the beginning, it was about stormwater. Are you saying open areas associated with stormwater or?
Yeah, so thinking about stormwater and yes, yeah, the impervious areas that would be there.
So the stormwater threshold kicks in at an acre of impervious regardless of lot size. The way this site is designed, they stay under one acre of impervious area. For one reason why the apartment project didn't happen is with the parking lot and the building, they did get, I think, to an acre, and it was complicated to kind of manage stormwater. Uh, the Dakota towns also was under the one acre threshold, even though the site was again over an acre in, in Lee End area. So with our current policy in Phi B, it, it just, it doesn't matter how large the site is. It's just how much impervious area you create.
So you could, they're kind of incentivized to, to keep some open space, though not common open space, right?
If they're anywhere close to staying under 43,560 square feet, they will stay under 43,560 square feet. If, if it's going to be over, it's going to be over, but they will try very hard to stay under.
That's kind of our, not guarantee, but our, uh, lever. I mean, that's, that's what will keep them from, in, in having more, uh, pervious surfaces, right? Is.
I think it's just totally driven by what you can get on the site and, and set from the very marginal last 5% maybe. You'll find a way to shave off the edge of the street or to, to shave off driveway width or, or something just to avoid that, that stormwater factor.
Thank you.
And, but we really need units. I, I'm, uh, I want to maintain our eye, and I appreciate you raising the, the, uh, climate action goals. But what we need are houses, housing units desperately. And I don't want that to be the tail that wags a dog on a project like this. My bigger concern from a viability perspective, it's really hard for these small, uh, projects to maintain private streets. They'll have to have some kind of HOA or some kind of management structure to assess funds. And when you have such a small project, it's just pragmatically hard to get everybody chip in to do the road maintenance. So that's pragmatically my only concern with this, but I love the idea of what we're doing here. And we need the tax base. It, we're taking a property that's a vacant lot and we're going to add, uh, tax revenue to this.
Other comments, questions? Rachel, thoughts, input?
I would, I guess echo what Tim said is I think that the number of units is important and then getting more affordable housing is important to me. So I think I would be willing to support the text amendment.
Are there any preferences between option one and option two while you guys are giving your thoughts there?
I mean, I, when you described option three, I found myself saying, why wouldn't we just do something and swing for the fence a little bit on option three?
Swing for the fence would be option one.
So option, but option three.
Option one apply, yeah.
In option three, we're moving the 10, the 10% open space.
Option one is removing it for all types of housing. Option three is just for townhomes.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, that would be option one. That, that's the one that's more aggressive. That's what I would support. Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, I, I'm going to have to just, I agree that we need infill projects. I think, I guess as my professional background is coming in, is I, I struggle with the fact that we start setting precedents where you start having, um, not variances, but exceptions, uh, to setbacks, to the amount of units being placed on here. I understand the comments, people don't want, you know, yards. I understand that, but it, my concern is that there is so much, so many units being placed, uh, in this area. It is, Kelly can, you know, correct me in terms of the, you know, the density, but you know, a person out their back, units 15 and 16 have five feet out their back before they go into a retaining wall essentially and, and step down. Good design, good layout, you know, enhances lives. And to me, this is just packing an awful lot of units onto a piece of property. And, um, once you remove the common space, I mean, to me, the purpose of the common space is to give some opportunities for people to at least, um, see some either landscaped areas or have some area that is not paved or, uh, you know, roofed over. But I, I just, I, I am a little apprehensive about what the unintended consequences might end up being long-term in terms of what, what we're really going to end up getting, you know, on other potential projects. I understand that, you know, in this area, Tim, I don't disagree. This property really, you know, warrants and begs for, you know, redevelopment. But, uh, I, it just, it's, it's, again, I'm just, Kelly made the point, you could have had, you know, four houses, you know, together, but, um, that's fine. But I just.
That would also.
I, I, I struggle with the fact that the, the impression I get looking at the site plans pretty much, how many can we get on here and not really thinking about what would be enhancing people's, you know, uh, life with some, you know, green space and tree. I, I'm trying to think where you're, where you're going to put any kind of trees or shrubs, honestly, you know, on this kind of a plan. I know there's no landscaping requirements, I get that.
Well, there, there will be on the street. So the only landscape requirement will be on the private street. So the street trees would be there, but in the front yards, there would not. So back to your comment about, if we did more attached units, actually there would be more common space also. So if you did the same number of units and attached them all, we would actually have more common space. But again, the applicant's trying to create minimal private usable space for their, their owner. So there's, these are the constant trade-offs in the PUD is do you, do you like having to only share one wall? Or do you want three people to share walls and then have some additional open space? Those are the things where if staff had a, a better understanding of council's expectations about what private or common usable space values we really had, it'd be easier to guide that product selection. Um, kind of the same thing with the front and the rear yard setbacks. Any, any assistance in what those expectations are about what compatibility and context sensitive, um, really means to you, helps us guide that applicant, um, in those choices.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. And I think your paragraph you have says council needs to consider with this request, how PUD standards affect the maximum number of housing units on small infill sites, how it relates to achieving the goal, the goals of Ames 2040 Plan and provide infill housing throughout the city in a context sensitive and high-quality living environment, which goes back to my first question is what is high-quality living environment and what is context sensitive? I think those are, once council makes a decision on what those specifically are, that would give more direction and guidance. And, and I fully expect, I mean, would accept that others may not agree with me and that's fine. But I, I, I'm just concerned that I don't see this as being context sensitive or necessarily a high-quality living environment.
Yeah, I think the living environment one is going to be a little bit open to interpretation, which is intentionally is, I know it is. It does seem to set up a preference right now, maybe it's unspoken, that the town home unit is a preferred living environment over the apartment living environment. Cause the apartment can always be done without the PUD. To get to something that's not an apartment, it seems like we're headed down this path of trying to get through the PUD process. So I think there's two elements. Is, is the housing type itself a justification for the PUD? And then secondly, what, what we're talking about mostly now is, is the site designed with that housing type also a, a desirable living environment for, for some type of resident? Again, I would never encourage you to think that every house in the city needs to have a yard. That is not what everybody wants. Um, we had a discussion with the planning commission on Dakota towns and one of the individuals like, well, I would never live there. You don't have to live there. Somebody else will want to live there. Um, I think we all got stuck in zoning in the eighties and nineties that everybody had to have the same thing. I think we all know that's not, that's definitely not Ames' perspective. They, we don't have to have the same thing, but we do want to have a quality environment, which will vary, both housing type and usable space. And I think that's, again, any help we have as staff in terms of those expectations helps guide these applicants more effectively through the process.
And council, I just want to say that I really, really appreciate Kelly as being a sounding board. And he and I have had probably three hours worth of conversations in the last couple of weeks about a number of things. And, uh, um, I may not necessarily always agree with some of his positions. I respect his professional opinion and really this give and take and, and conversation, I think is healthy and it's important because I think we need to understand what are we trying to accomplish since we set these precedents and go forward. And this PUD and infill is something which is new, and so this is a very appropriate project. I just want to thank Kelly for basically being my, his, you know, my no or, or a no to my yes essentially and vice versa. But the point is that's, I think, a very healthy thing to have, but it's because I respect his, you know, opinion and, uh, and value what he's got that brings to the table and respect his opinion as a planner as well, so.
For a long time I've, I mean, we've definitely heard about a desire for, uh, greater variety in housing types, right? So we've historically, we've had your single-family homes and we have apartments. And so I, yeah, I think maybe this is, this is just sort of, you know, the, the town home as a, as an alternative housing type, we're seeing more of now or more proposals, um, you know, for it. And so this is, I think, a way to find ways to make that work, make those, the diversity of housing types work. Because yeah, we could say, oh no, just put apartments on it or, um, just put a single-family home on it. But, but we want that diversity in housing types, so.
Yeah, and I, I preach, and I'm not, I would not be advocating for an apartment building. Um, I think town homes are appropriate. I'm just saying that the number of town homes being placed on this particular piece a lot and how it's being arranged, in my opinion, is a lot in terms of what could be potentially done. It would reduce, it would require less units. And I have no design and I'm not trying to try, I'm not going to essentially trying to dictate from the, you know, the dais. I'm just saying, it's my observation and my feedback that I'm offering. And, uh, I'll let, let it go at that.
Just one thing to bounce off of Bronwyn's comments. We already have a lot of apartments that meet the setback requirements that have the open space. But I mean, in apartments that I've lived in, I haven't really seen some of that open space utilized as much. And so I do think even with smaller private space, um, it could be enough. And we might have to be flexible on some of these other criteria like setbacks in order to make projects go. We can't always be the ones that say, well, you know, minimize the number of units because maybe then it doesn't cash flow and the project will never get done. And so I think I'm in favor of flexibility and trying to get infill and diverse housing types to happen, rather than, you know, being super restrictive.
I'm a little bit concerned about alternative ones simply because it is everywhere for all housing types. And I don't, to me, that doesn't say context sensitive. And so I, I'm more inclined to look at option two or option three as opposed to option one. And Rachel, you mentioned affordable units. We don't have any guarantee that these are going to be under $300,000. In fact, a lot of town homes in Ames are well over $300,000.
Yeah.
So, you know, is, is the product what we need? I don't know. It's definitely a different, um, configuration, right? Town home configuration as opposed to single-family home. But I'm, I'm hesitant to go with, um, removing that requirement citywide for all construction. Well, it wouldn't be citywide. It would be based on the zoning district. So it's not removing it entirely. But still, I think that that, that opens up less opportunity to be seriously considering the context. And maybe that's just me viewing it that way, but.
Well, if we go, go down the road and we get projects that we don't like, I mean, we're, your, your argument is, is an argument, sort of a parade of horribles. This is what could happen, but we don't, we don't really know that. I think we should try out option one, see what happens, see what kind of projects this yields.
We aren't very good at saying no though, Tim. So if we get a bad project, are we going to be willing to say no? Is a future council going to be willing to say no? I, I don't know. Um, that's all. I, I sort of feel like we should err on the side of, um, limiting at this point and then expanding once we see what we're getting, as opposed to starting expansive and then cutting back.
It's kind of interesting. I think on the apartments, the only, so in this property, I'm just going to give you kind of a flavor for how the zoning works. On this property, apartments are already allowed, right? So you never need a PUD to do the apartments. Where option one, I'm trying to explain what the difference was to be here. Where option one would be valuable is if you were in an RL zoning district and you were doing a PUD and you'd proposed condos or apartments, not townhomes. The PUD allows you to have that building type that otherwise not is not permitted in there. Um, and you would need the PUD to have apartments. And then you would have to look at again, how does that fit in an RL neighborhood and how does all that work? If you did option three, and you had the RL zone as your base, you would not be able to do apartments, without having common area. You could only do a townhome project. So if a person is already allowed to do apartments, they're probably not going to do a PUD. The only, not the only, but probably the only place where this comes into play is in the RL zoning district, where maybe a grouping of a three or fourplex is valuable in terms of an infill project that otherwise you couldn't do. So, so does that kind of help sort out the, the major difference between one and three? Three is really going to only be townhomes regardless. Um, one helps in broader ways, but probably only in the RL zoning districts because apartments otherwise would probably be permitted.
I would have a real problem supporting the alternate, or alternative three, uh, one. Just to be open and candid, this is going to be a text amendment, is that correct?
Yeah, uh, I mean, what you're allowing for tonight is for the applicant to submit an, an application for a text amendment. And then because they know how they want to do the project and they would like to try to get this approved this summer still, they want to be able to at risk, do it concurrent with that text amendment application.
Why wouldn't you want to start, uh, do something to allow this project, if you want this project to move forward, to go forward? And, and then you always could expand it later on if you want to, if you want to go ahead and consider.
Sure. Any of the three alternatives allow for this project to move forward. The only option that doesn't is to say, I don't want to do a text amendment.
Kelly, um, this has come to us directly and not go, not gone through planning and zoning. Could you give us your sense of the, the value for us of maybe, and I, I, I would like to try to find some compromise and move the ball down the field. But I value the work of P and Z, we all do. And so would there be merit in giving them an opportunity to mull over the option one and try to take into account the, the unintended consequences and the implications in ways that maybe aren't, this isn't a good fit for us in this setting tonight? Is that a possibility?
I haven't had council refer, referral to the commission before making a decision. You're not approving anything tonight, so if you initiate this, the P and Z is going to give you a recommendation. It'll be on the one that is selected and they'll, they'll give you a recommendation where they think it's appropriate or not. If you were to, to refer it to a commission meeting and said, look at these three alternatives, we've never done that before, we, we could. It would add about four weeks to the process of making a decision.
Yeah, so what I have in mind, apologize, I'm getting late. Um, I would, um, conceptually, if, if three gets consensus around the dais, then let's do three. But then ask for option one. to be referred to P and Z for their consideration. We don't have, we, we don't have to do option one to make this project.
I just would hesitate. Of all the things we have on the list of things to do, parsing one and three twice makes little sense to me.
Okay.
So if we pick three, we should move forward and just say it's three and when we rewrite the zoning ordinance, we will revisit this in eighteen or two months, eighteen years, eighteen months, not nineteen years.
Eighteen years.
Yeah, oops. So you could put a placeholder.
Yeah, absolutely. Like, we'll revisit many of these issues when we rewrite the zoning ordinance. It is not worth our time to, to dig into this anymore than what we are.
And that's helpful. If, if this was gonna happen in the course of a normal zoning review, then it gives us some sense that we could always come back and revisit it.
Absolutely.
All right, open a public, public comment. Anyone want to address council on this topic tonight? Close public input. All right, is there a motion?
I'd move alternative three.
I'll second. I think.
All right.
I mean, I think it's gotten good consensus and it's a good starting place.
Yep.
Those pay the motions, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks Kelly. All right, move on. Item number forty-two.
You guys could have read a short Russian novel tonight and you're waiting to come up tonight.
Actually, I did too.
Good evening, mayor and city council. We've got Joshua Thompson, our Parks and Facilities Superintendent here tonight. Gonna kind of walk you through uh, this first uh, award.
Yeah, so the first uh, project tonight is the Daly Park Splash Pad uh, project we've been working on for many, many years. So it's finally, I feel like what's coming to fruition. So there's two components to, is part of this uh, C A F. Uh, the, the first component is the splash pad equipment. We received uh, three proposals from two companies. Um, and uh, and then the second part of it is the, actually the grading, the bringing in the utilities and then doing the concrete uh, pathways and, and all the concrete around the splash pad equipment. In regards to the funding, uh, the project came in, you know, with both uh, components is, you know, nine hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Available funding is um, just almost one point three five mi- uh, million dollars. So there's a surplus there that will be used for other projects. So staff is recommending alternative one.
And it would be done by June twenty twenty-six? Is that what I read?
That's, that's the goal, yep.
Cool.
Um, one of the your staff report said that a building is fifteen by fifteen foot, maybe constructed by city staff that you consider, given the fact that it came in so much under budget that instead of trying to take and use staff labor to build something, which, not that you guys have to do a great job. The point is, is that I'm just thinking, man, you guys have a lot of things on your plate.
Yep.
That you, a lot of balls you're juggling in the air. And is that one thing that could be looked at as potentially a uh, you know, outsourced to the, to the contractor, get some kind of, you know, a ballpark figure for that versus trying to do it yourself?
You know, with the, the, the available funding and the two other projects that we, we also need to get done, that we are basically unable to do any um, labor on, we feel like this is the low hanging fruit in regards to doing the work and it's pretty self, I mean, it's, there's not, it's not a very complex structure. Um, you know, S- Snyder and Associates who was hired to do the civil um, portion of the, of the plans um, is gonna design it basically for us and at basically no extra cost. So we feel like um, with our staff and potentially supplementing with uh, public work staff, uh, we feel like it, it's very doable, so.
Um, and then outdoor showers, so we still are stuck putting showers in because of this, by the Department of Health, is that correct?
That's correct. You know, it's part of swimming pool code, which this facility is basically gonna be the same regulations as a swimming pool because it's gonna be adding disinfection as far as chlorine. Um, you know, uh, we did get a big win in not having to add additional fixtures, which I think, which would have added to this project substantially as far as cost. Um, we feel like this is, is a, I, I'd, I'd do this any day and then have to build another restroom facility.
And then the D I A said that a waiver will be granted. Um, I guess I'm curious, have we gotten
So.
what we needed for the plaza from them? And if not, when is that coming? And then Daly Park, is that, I mean, the point is, they are understaffed, it seems like, and uh, over.
Overcommitting.
Overcommitted. So I was curious in terms of just, so we don't go down the road and find out, oops, uh, you went in good faith, but if they change their mind or they, they change staff and all of a sudden we're just uh.
I have email documentation in regards to Daly Park that they, uh, are granting the waiver. I have not received the paperwork. They are very, very challenging. And so the way this is gonna go is I'm gonna visit them uh, down to, down in Des Moines and, and get some, something in writing in person so we can get this over with and get, move forward with it.
And the plaza, we gotten that already?
We have not received final approval for that one yet as well. So some staff has changed down at this, down at the, that department. And so we're gonna be working with them to, to keep the ball rolling so we can get both facilities open.
I know it's a different project, but it's just, I thought, I saw that, oh geez, where we at on plaza, so.
Good comment.
Not, not to uh.
So I've, I've forgotten at this point, are we recirculating this water?
Yes, we are, yep.
So are we confident that we are not gonna have the same issues with this splash pad and the recirculation of water as we're having with the Shanker Plaza Splash Pad?
Um, obviously it hasn't been constructed yet, um, but um, the way that it is designed, um, I'm very con, I'm, I'm pretty confident it's gonna be um, how we want it and it's gonna work as designed.
And, and one of the other things Gloria is, is this with Shanker Plaza, we were wanting to do something that um, was kind of atypical for spray pads or splash pads. And that's what caused a, a lot of delays and redesign and everything with Shanker Plaza. This is what we're doing at Daly Park is of, of very much a traditional splash pad. Um, and, and we aren't asking to, to do anything unique.
Yep.
And also you bid out the equipment. Are they installing the equipment too?
Correct, yep.
So the designers are actually installing it, which is a little different than designing it and then someone else.
Yeah, it's very, very similar to the agility course uh, project at Car Park.
Yeah. All right, any questions?
I have a comment. Having recently, very recently been a kid living in a, a town with.
Very recently you've been a kid?
Yes, yes.
Defined very recently.
About uh, three years.
Okay.
More recently than I have.
Um, I grew up in a town with a splash pad. Some of the best memories with my brother and sister. You know, just great. So I love splash pad and I think it's a great idea for.
Well, next year you can be a kid again and go.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move alternative one.
Next second.
Okay. Roll call, please. What's that?
Do you wanna open the hearing?
No, I don't want to. Yes. All right, the witching hours come.
We can edit this from the video, no worries.
That's, that's right. All right, declare a public hearing on this project to be open. Is there anyone who wants to address council on this topic? Declare the public hearing to be closed. Now they entertain a motion.
Move alternative one.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, roll call.
Junk.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
B D Hanson.
Aye.
Rollin.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And item number forty-three.
Yes, the second project is the um, Ada Hayden Heritage Park Path Replacement Project. We've been working with it W H K S. Um, for design and uh, engineered specs and drawings, um, we received seven bids for the project, which includes um, removing and replacing uh, the asphalt paths at Ada Hayden Heritage Park, the three point two miles uh, as long as, as well as the, the path that goes to Fletcher and Stone Brook Avenue um, with concrete and increasing the width from ten foot to twelve feet. Um, we feel like the concrete's gonna, it's gonna add a lot more longevity to the project. Uh, we received seven bids, uh, all very uh, competitive bids. Uh, we're, we're very pleased with um, the low bid contract. We've worked with them on a couple of projects. Um, you know, as in regards to the funding, uh, we have a surplus of a hundred and six thousand dollars, which again will be um, asked to use that funding for another project here in a couple of minutes, so.
When does it start? I saw it ends November. When's it begin?
So uh, the concrete contractor is kind of uh, they, they said that probably the earliest to be able to start would be early August, but with these recent rains, um, just like every concrete contractor and dirt contractor, they've been delayed. So um, potentially up to, you know, starting August fifteenth, maybe, hopefully not much later than that. Um, but we are, we are giving them ten weeks to get this project completed um, from, obviously from start to finish. So we want, the goal is obviously close it down, get it, get the project done as soon as possible so we can open it back up because we know how busy that park is and how, how, how enjoyed it is by the residents.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could you remind us Keith, will, or, or Joshua, will there be any uh, physical separation um, on this, this trail or will it all be uh, uh, painted separation? What, remind us that.
Yeah, so there's no physical separation. Um, just because talking with the, the engineer, uh, W H K S in regards, they said, didn't think that was a great idea. There's some certain um, uh, regulations in regards to bike paths and how those um, are all supposed to be constructed. Um, it's not recommended for that, but we are gonna be adding symbols just designate what, what pedestrians and bicyclists, bicycl- bicyclists or other individuals on a, a wheeled uh, device, how they should properly use the path, along with signage um, stationed throughout the, throughout the circuit.
Great, thank you.
Any questions? Um, I know you're trying to save money to put for the next project. But I was just quite curious, there's one alternate you said, Edgewater Connector. It's eleven thousand bucks.
Yep.
And I know it says it's in good shape. But we're spending one point three million dollars on this project. Does it not make sense to try and find eleven thousand dollars someplace else and get this done so it all looks exactly the same and all ties in?
Yep.
Versus having, you know, that one connector be a different color of concrete. I mean, it's just, this is, this is gonna be beautiful once all said and done and really be enhanced. But I'm just, I, I know you if you, you said it was in good shape and so you're gonna keep, I just, sometimes we'd save things. And then later on you say, boy, I wish you would have changed that. It would look so much nicer.
Well, and it, it's, Keith can maybe uh, comment as if I say something incorrectly, but we, I feel like we're on the same page. But one of the issues with this Edgewater path is the clearances on both sides of the path. There is retaining, there's landscaping, there's private lands, private homeowner landscaping that is right next to the path that is gonna make this, it would make it very, very challenging um, to get this done and done well without um, some, some additional costs um, that we feel that, that may encroach upon uh, the private landscaping. So we felt that um, that, that the path is in good enough shape that we, that if we need to um, our own public work staff could easily take it out or we could do it, we could program it later at a different time.
We'll never get it done cheaper. At this, than this, at, at this, because the point is, they're mobilized in the area to come back and do a small path, but.
Yep.
With that said. I know you have.
And if it's something that, if that's something that council wants us to do, um, we can easily do it and.
You mean, we do it being the staff?
No, 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 we could add it.
Yep.
Yeah, if council directs staff to, to, they hate, not only do alternates one and two, add alternate three to this for the, just under twelve thousand dollars. Um, we'll just have to make a difference.
I didn't really, wasn't aware of this.
There, there, we don't, I don't know the additional costs for that, but the constraints on this area are very tight. Um, so.
Okay, yeah.
Um, and remind us, uh, were we able to get the uh, the length of the, the trail to be the five K distance?
We're, we're actually over that dis, we're actually, um, we, our engineer measured it and in fact, we're over that distance. We're over the three point two miles.
Over is okay.
Yeah, so we're.
Cause that way they can have the start and stop for five K races out there easily, so.
Correct, correct, yep.
It's not right now?
No, it, it, it is.
It is right now also?
There was a comment that brought to us to saying that they would like to add a link to it, um, to, to, you know, and we had the, the, the engineer measured it and said that, no, it, we are actually over the three point two miles.
Okay. All right, declare the public hearing on the Ada Hayden Heritage Park Path Replacement Project to be open. Is there anyone who wants to address council on this project? Seeing and hearing none, declare the public hearing to be closed.
So on, if we went with uh, alternative three, I'm a little confused. So would the path have to go on private property?
We won't, we wouldn't be able to get the twelve feet. It'd have to be pretty much the same. It would be the same width as what it is now.
Which is.
Which is, which is.
Which is how it was bid.
Yeah, exactly, right.
It, it was how, it was, you know, so, so the contractors that, that bid on this project, um, you know, we, they, they should have gone out and taken a look um, at the, the project. They know the, the constraints and they say they can do it for twelve thousand dollars. You know, we would hold that to them, um, or hold them to that. So, so it, it will be tight, but the contractor in this case, Caliber, said that they could do it for twelve thousand dollars.
And they're responsible by the specifications to, if they damage private um.
True.
Landscaping, is they're responsible to repair it, which is, hopefully it's, doesn't happen, but.
Correct.
Correct.
All right.
I'll move uh, alternative one plus alternative three.
And alternative.
You mean bid, bid or?
Yeah.
Bid, bid, alternative.
Right, yep.
Oh yeah, it's alternative, alternative, yeah.
Second.
All right. So the motion accepting, um, reported bids and resolution approving final plan specifications, reporting contract to Caliber. Appella Iowa amount of eleven, one, one million, one thirty-six, eight sixty-one, ninety-four cents plus alternate number three at eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars even. Is that correct? That's what's in the report.
That's correct.
And to reinforce the mayor's point, this is our crown jewel park now. Let's make this nice. It, the, the, the amount is insignificant. Let's do it right.
Roll call.
Fletcher.
Aye.
B D Hanson.
Aye.
Rollin.
Aye.
Coriary.
Aye.
Garten.
Aye.
Junk.
Aye.
All right, item number forty-four, Parks Maintenance Maintenance Expansion Project.
All right, the final project to talk about tonight is the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility Expansion Project, which will um, you know, the, we have multiple work sites or multiple um, job, whatever, where our staff works. So the goal of this to, is to provide one unit, one facility consolidate with all of our equipment under one roof. Uh, then our, you know, it helps our efficiency. It helps, improves communication. So it includes renovation of our current Parks Maintenance Shop, which is at seven hundred East Thirteenth Street. Uh, we would add additional parking and then we'd add a uh, cold storage facility uh, which would, you know, house all that equipment supplies um, that are from other sites. And then also it's working with the Water Department would be relocating uh, the Bulk Water Station uh, farther south on, along that uh, that maintenance road to the, like to the Ash Pond, so. Um, you know, uh, one of the concerns that we had is the, the architect we were working with um, uh, felt like they kind of missed the mark in regards to the, the, the cost proposals or the cost estimates. Um, but if you look at all the bids, um, they were all very, very similar, similar priced. Um, and you know, it's, there's a couple of components in regards to the alternative. Number one is um, you know, approve uh, king construction um, for the, for the award, but also reallocating funds from multiple s- projects that were, with their savings. Uh, one of them, two of them are what we've talked about tonight, the Daly Splash Pad and then also the Hayden Hayden, Ada Hayden Heritage Park Project, so. Uh, and then there's multiple others that are outlined in the, in the packet, so.
So, so based on, on what council just approved, um, to, to make this work um, under one C, um, that alternative, when talking about reallocating funds, uh, Park Development Fund um, would probably need to go to um, one hundred and a, or one hundred and twelve thousand, seventy dollars is what we would need to pull from the Park Development Fund. Um, because the Ada Hayden Project would be reduced right by that eleven thousand, three forty-five. I, I think my math was right there.
Yeah, I think we'll let Carly uh, when you can check the math on that in terms of, you know, and actually you also have to reduce the, the Path Replacement Project savings of one oh six by eleven, eleven, three forty-five. I'm sure the motion will capture that essentially though. All right, comments, questions?
Could you review for us, Keith? This will be located where?
So this is a. So, this is at, on, on 13th Street, right at the base of the cemetery, on the, on the south side. So, so there'll be renovations to the building, current building, increasing the, the breakroom size and so on, and then we have a cold storage building to the south of our main shop, and this will go to the south of that.
Is it the, the sledding hill?
No, it's farther south. If you, if you familiar with where our mulch, you can't miss.
It's kind of in that area, though.
The Mulch Street pile area, that's where that new storage building is going to be.
Okay.
Yep.
And is there any concern with respect to flooding in this area?
It's out of, it's out of the flood plain, out of the 100-year flood plain.
Okay.
We're above that.
Thanks.
Other questions? All right, declare the public hearing on this item to be opened, is anyone who wants to address council on this topic? Seeing and hearing none, declare the public hearing to be closed. I'm just doing some quick math on this, the Ada Haden Path Replacement Project would go from 106,294 to 94,949, that would be the overage. And Keith, what'd you get for the Park Development Fund?
112,070, 070. And I came up with the same number you did.
Okay. All right, is there a motion accepting reported bids?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, entertain, entertain motion approving final plans, specifications, awarding a contract to King Canootson Construction, Inc. of Iowa Falls, Iowa, an amount of 1,344,075.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Okay. Then entertain motion on resolution approving allocating, reallocating funds from the Daily Park Splash Pad Project in the amount of 357, 358. Ada Haden Path Replacement Project savings of 94,949. Mini pitch pro, mini pitch project, 64,000 dollars savings. Agility course project, 30,000 dollars savings. Disc golf course project, 10,000 dollars savings. Brookside stair railing project savings of 1,0698, and Park Development Fund contribution of 112,070 to be used for this project.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Um, just, that motion included 64,000 from the mini pitch project, it's 64,500.
Correct. Did you say that?
Did I say 64,000?
Yes.
You are listing really well. I'm sorry, 64,500, as written on the agenda as well as on the council action form. That was just a test to make sure that you were listening. Thank you. Roll call.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item number 45, Hearing on Amendments to Chapter 29 and Chapter 13 of the Ames National Code.
Yeah, so getting this is the first of two ordinances that we're responding to state law changes with, so you have minimal discretion with this, changes to the AD ordinance, we went through this in May. The, the main thing that, that council chose to do was to eliminate how we allow a special exception for accessory buildings to encroach in the rear yard. We are removing ADUs from that benefit because they now can be larger and taller than other accessory buildings. So, an accessory dwelling unit now has to meet the same setbacks as a house, they don't get the privileges that other accessory buildings do. And there's a number of, of changes in here, trying to mesh the, the language of the state law into how we do things. We also sent you an email last night, there's three other changes we want to add, so if, if you make a motion to approve, we would ask you to approve the draft ordinance attached plus the three changes that are in the memo regarding some other clarifications that we wanted, that we, that we saw after we had issued this council action form.
Questions? Can you, I see the term used, single-family residence?
Yes.
Single-family dwelling, and then some changes says for properties with a single-family dwelling or duplex, but then it says in the next one, locate on same lot as a single-family residence, but doesn't include duplex. So, there seems to be, can you explain why some include duplex and some don't include duplex?
It's a little messy because our terms don't match the term of the, of the state law, and we don't want to rewrite our whole zoning ordinance to use that term. So, what you need to understand is when the phrase "single-family residence" is used by the cross-references in state law, that includes a, what we call a "single-family" or a "two-family" home. So, it's inclusive of both of those types of dwellings. Our code generally says a single or one-family dwelling and a two-family dwelling as two separate things, but under state law, they are lumped together for this ordinance by their reference to the, the state, yeah, to a state code.
Hence, the, as defined by Iowa code.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's great.
Well, it's just, because in 29.409, it says "single-family residence," as defined by state law, but doesn't have record, doesn't have the, the Iowa code section. Was unfortunate, very confusing for someone who's trying to read it like me or somebody else who's trying to understand what it's actually saying, so. Okay, any other, any questions? So, what you sent last night, can you refresh us?
Yep.
Is what?
So, I asked for.
What are we, what are we passing, or what is council passing tonight? Is it what was sent?
It's what's attached plus the three changes in the, in the memo last night. And those three things are, to clarify, and, again, the terms of the state law are not how I would prefer to write it, but it just says whether you have a single-family residence on a lot or not, not whether it's even permitted to be there, just that it exists. So, that kind of caused a question of how do non-conforming properties work? We have, like, on Cherry Street, we have single-family homes in a commercial zone. We would normally not allow for those to be modified and add additional square footage with some minor exceptions. So, we added this section saying, on a non-conforming single-family residence, we're going to treat the ADU the same as we would another household living use on the property. So, we just wanted to tie that together, there were some questions how that would really work, so that's what we added. And then the next one, as an accessory use, we had it listed as only being allowed on a lot with one single-family home, or single-family dwelling, sorry. But by state law, we just talked about single-family residence, that also includes a two-family or a duplex home as well. So, we needed to strike the reference to single-family dwelling and replace it with single-family residence. And then the last one, which is a little bit new, but I, very clearly was the intent, in the single-family conservation overlay, when we first adopted the ADUs, they could only be detached, so we exempted them from all the standards that single-family homes have to go through. Well, now, under state law, it can be either attached or detached. We did not believe the council meant to exempt additions to single-family homes from the single-family standards, so we're just adding the word detached in to keep it on point with where it used to be. So, detached ADUs are still exempt, but if you're doing an addition to your house, you can't call it an ADU and then get out of the single-family conservation overlay design requirements. So, those are the three additional changes.
So, as pointed reference, we're doing all this to comply with the change in the state law, this is not because we're trying to pull something on anybody else, it's just...
Correct, we have no choice but to permit them across the city on any property that has a single-family residence, and you cannot restrict occupancy in any way of those structures to an owner-occupied requirement. You cannot require parking, and you have to allow for 1,000 square feet or 50% of the house, whichever is more, more. And you have to treat it the same as a single-family home for basically all other design standards.
So, in your, what you sent out last night, it says "single-family residence," that's the state's definition.
It's the state's word.
So, is it appropriate for you to add that to what you sent out as well as you, as you did in the other ones, or?
In what, in, I thought we, I'm pretty sure we wrote it the way we wanted, is there something that sticks out to you?
Uh, 29, 501, it says, may include one accessory dwelling unit on any property with a single-family residence. In the other ones, you said "as defined by state code," I didn't know.
Oh, no, you don't need to add that, because by, we're adding a definition of single-family residence. The, the ADU definition says it's a single-family residence as defined by state law, so we don't have to repeat that every single time. Maybe, it's a little, I'm not going to say this is perfect, because I have to squish this in here somehow.
Right. And I appreciate you're trying to get this done to begin compliance by July 1. All right, declare the public hearing on the amendments to Chapter 29 and Chapter 13 of the code regarding accessory dwelling units to be opened, is there anyone who wants to address council tonight? Declare the public hearing to be closed. So, we're going to need a motion that would incorporate both. Mark, you have a recommendation on how we go ahead and do this so that, since we have both what was put in the council action form as well as something which came in as a...
Right, I, I, I think just a motion to, to adopt the ordinance with the incorporating the changes in the memo will be enough. I mean, that's, now, that provides the record, we're going to incorporate them into the final version of the ordinance that will be signed and filed.
Okay. Is there a motion on this, on the ordinance?
I would move that we adopt the regulations for ADUs based on the proposed changes as shown in Attachment A and those given to us in the memo from the planning department.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
And I would just say as a comment, this is yet another example of people in Des Moines deciding what our community should look like. Just want to point that out.
Can I just make one clarification? There is not actually an Attachment A, it just says draft, it just says "final ordinance" as the label in the council action form, just to, I see the alternative said that, but the final title was not Attachment A.
Okay. Sure, as shown in the...
Final ordinance ADUs and the memo provided.
Okay, that.
You got that, Carly? She's got it covered. All right, roll call.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Move, we waive the rules?
Second.
Thank you, those in favor, motion. Roll call, please.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
All right, entertain motion on second passage of ordinance.
Move on second.
Second.
Roll call.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Entertain motion on third reading and adoption of ordinance number 4561.
Move on third.
Second.
Roll call.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
All right, move on, item number 46.
So, again, you have almost no discretion on what to change with this one, because the state law created a new variance process that you must allow to exist. By adding it to our code, you do apply our notification requirements to it, and then while we were updating the variance process, we did clean up some items that were not how we actually did things, like having the ZBA decide if applications are complete, staff decides those things and routes them. So, we're recommending approval for the ordinance that's attached, and again, suspension of rules so it could be adopted before July 1st.
Questions? All right, declare the public hearing on this item to be opened, is there anyone who wants to address council on this topic? Seeing and hearing none, declare the public hearing to be closed, entertain a motion on first passage.
Move on first.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Entertain motion to suspend the rules and allow second, third reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Those, uh, roll call.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Entertain motion on second passage of the ordinance.
Move on second.
Second.
Roll call.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Entertain motion on third reading and adoption of ordinance number 4562.
Move on third.
Second.
Roll call.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
All right, item 47, Kelly, you still here?
Yep, pretty simple request here, 1 acre, 100% voluntary annexation, it's surrounded by industrial land, it's owned by the same group that owns that land, they want it in the city to merge into their overall industrial master plan. The only unique thing here is when we started this process, you did direct staff to initiate a rezoning process concurrently, so once you approve this annexation, we'll bring back changing the site to GI zoning to match, just to facilitate this getting done as efficiently as possible.
All right, questions for Kelly? All right, declare the public hearing on a 100% voluntary request for annexed land according, located at 57, 258, 220th Street into the city of Ames to be opened, is there anyone who wants to address council on this topic? Seeing and hearing none, declare the public hearing to be closed, entertain a motion on resolution approving voluntary annexation.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
All right, item 48. See, any questions for staff on this, or Vanessa, do you have any, bring anything to our attention, otherwise we, any questions for Vanessa on this item?
Thanks for staying late.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, declare a public hearing on the submission of a proposed application to State of Iowa Economic Development Authority, IEDA, for a CDBG CB grant funding is open. Anyone want to address council on this topic? Seeing and hearing none, declare a public hearing to be closed, entertain motion on resolution approving submission of an application for financial support of services related to persons experiencing homelessness.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
All right, move on to item 49, second, entertain motion on second reading of ordinance to comply with a new state law regarding citizen review boards, a police and repeal of Ames Resident Police Advisory Committee, RPAC.
Move on second.
Second.
Roll call.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Item 50, entertain motion on third reading and adoption of ordinance number 4559 relating to establishing the urban revitalization plan for 329 Southeast 5th Street.
Move on third.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Rollins?
Aye.
Coriary?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
Aye.
Biddy Hanson?
Aye.
Thank you, and before I call for a motion on the item 51, I just want to say, I really appreciate the conversation we had tonight regarding PUDs, and as I think many of you know, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this 1, 1, 3 North Dakota, and I just think that, given the fact of where this development, you know, is at, where it's going, where it's at, and talking to Kelly, we probably spent, what, almost two hour and a half at least talking about it a couple of weeks ago, came to better understanding of the amount of time that was spent with staff working through this situation. I just, I don't know if we have a workshop or continue having this discussion, but there are things, for example, taking into account natural, you know, landscaping, Kelly informs me that that's rarely, if ever, used. But there are things, for example, taking into account natural, you know, landscaping, Kelly informs me that that's rarely if ever used as a criteria in considering factors, which was important for me to, you know, to understand. The variance, is that a variance? What is it?
Deviations.
Deviations. All right. I'll get it before, someday I'll, deviation is, you know, part of the PUD. I just will be continuing to participate, encouraging and expressing opinion in terms of how we move forward on these PUD developments, so. With that said, entertain motion on third reading and adoption of ordinance number forty-five sixty, rezoning one-thirteen North Dakota from RL to residential medium density RM with a planned unit development overlay, RM-PUD.
Move on third.
Second.
Roll call.
Corriery?
Aye.
Garten?
Aye.
Junk?
Aye.
Betcher?
No.
Beatty Hansen?
Aye.
Rollins?
Aye.
All right. This decision to communicate is to counsel. We have three. First one is from Gary Voughtine.
Gary Voughtine has written you a letter. He's the CFO for Mary Greeley Medical Center. And it's their desire to move ahead with a new project on the Mary Greeley Medical Center campus that would involve the construction of a medical training facility along with some row homes. And to accomplish this, I think he understands that there'll be some needed changes, text amendments to allow that project to proceed. So what's before you, I think it's two issues. When to deal with this issue? Okay, that's the first one. All right. And let's deal with that first. The letter that Gary wrote said that he'd like to be on the city council's agenda on July eight, the next council meeting, which would be July eighth. But the city staff has urged the Mary Greeley to have a meeting with the neighborhood, invite the neighborhood to a meeting so they could discuss the project, allow the neighbors to ask questions about it. Now, they're going to have that meeting scheduled for July seventh. So I don't believe it's fair or right to have that meeting right afterwards on July eighth. Now, he mentioned the next meeting, but the next meeting would be the eighth. I just think that's premature. We need to make sure the neighbors are informed of this project and give it some time to talk among themselves. So that's one issue. The next issue is when we have that meeting, and let's say it's the next meeting, which would be July twenty-second. The question is, they've asked you to place on the agenda without a memo. You know how we usually have the memos to describe what the issues are? By, in this case would be, Kelly would do that. They would like to go right to have, put a place on the agenda. At that agenda, since the text amendment, remember the process, you decide after you hear the information, whether you want to proceed and allow them to initiate a text amendment. Then it goes through Tim and then it goes through the whole process with planning and zoning comes back to you. But at that time, you could actually say, "No, we don't want to proceed with it," right? You don't have to proceed with it. So there's two issues. One, you want to place it on the agenda. I don't believe July eighth is, is, it's too soon. So that would be July twenty-second would be the next council meeting. And then, if you want to place on the twenty-second or you want to refer for a letter, a memo for the council first to outline the issues before you, and then that would probably have to come later on.
Can we not get a memo for the eighth meeting and then discuss whether we want to put it on a future agenda or not?
Could you pick up, please?
Wait, you mean could Kelly get you a memo?
Yeah.
Without putting it on the agenda, you're saying?
She can't, here in the back of the year.
Yeah. Is it possible, Kelly?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not putting it on the agenda. You just want a memo from staff dealing with the issues. We would like to get some information from the neighborhood, so I don't know if we'll be able to get the feedback, because we'll have to write that, that memo.
The memo will just deal with the technical part. We want the neighborhood feedback.
Yeah, we don't give you any feedback from the neighbors then.
You won't want to hear that before we would decide, for sure.
Absolutely. So the memo would just be your traditional memo that says, "Here's the zoning standard. Here's something you could change."
We can get you that.
Yeah.
So then, oh, then you want to place it, you're ready to place it on the twenty-second?
I don't know. I'm just saying if we could have that information from staff, it would help.
Decide whether to put it on the...
In the logisticals.
In the timeline, kind of, yeah.
So when would you make the decision on the, at the eighth meeting, whether you're going to put it on the twenty-second so we can inform Greeley?
Right.
Right.
Would we be getting feedback from that neighborhood meeting that we can read by the eighth?
No.
Or is it just?
No, but we would before we discussed it on the twenty-second, if we decided to put it on the twenty-second.
If you want the feedback from the neighborhood, you cannot, we can't have the memo to you on the eighth.
If you want...
If you want the feedback from the neighbors from that meeting.
In that memo.
In that memo.
Correct. I understand that.
The feedback could come in a separate...
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we're going to have any information about what occurred at the neighborhood meeting?
Well, it's not our meeting.
It's not our meeting. So it's not our meeting. It's Mary Greeley's meeting.
I'm sure the neighborhood will probably meet and talk and provide you with their take on this, on this project. After they're informed of it, they're not sure what the, we're not sure what the exact project is yet.
Out of curiosity, would...
Does that make sense to you?
Would your memo also include, I mean, one of the things in the letter is permit a building height of up to sixty feet and a twelve-foot setback, setback.
Yeah, those are the two.
Is there, are there images that you've already seen that would also be included in the memo that counsel could see?
I do not possess what might be the current
Okay.
version of the project, so I, so I think I'd be hard pressed to show you anything before that July seventh meeting, because I don't know what. I know they have drawings. I just don't know what the final thing is that they're showing the neighborhood.
I just didn't know if you had already received something that was able to be included in the memo that would give more information, because...
I can check with them. I, I might have, they, they could easily share the most up-to-date site plan and explain that. I can obviously talk to them and see what they're, what's available.
See, one of the things I personally struggle with is that we get requests and then we don't see the full implications in terms of a drawing and all of a sudden we decide we're going to go ahead and do something and then, or the council decides they want to move forward and all of a sudden, "Oh, we didn't realize it was this or this or this." And I'm going to go back to the one-thirteen North Dakota. I mean, when that request came in to do a PUD, council had not seen any kind of a concept or whatever, and all of a sudden it comes and you got to deal with all the deviations and other factors that go into it. So I was just trying to see if you could be more informed in advance to try not talk about something that maybe a council doesn't want to talk about, which to your point, I think you want to get more information from a technical standpoint to see if you want to put it on the agenda to begin with.
Right.
So we could try to get as much as we can for that eighth memo, but it depends if they...
I understand. Yeah.
I may have been missing something. Do we have a sense of the timing from Mary Greeley's perspective? I mean, this is not something they're going to be constructing in the next...
The urgency of it.
Yeah, could you clarify that?
It's always hard for me to answer. The last time I met with their design team, their, their goal was to get approval as quick as possible and have possibly start construction next year.
Well, and, and so, let's, we can make that happen so they can do construction next year. I mean, I feel like there's some pressure being brought to bear on us to move this thing forward. I would want to take all the time that we need in order to visit with the neighbors. This, just preliminarily, this looks like a phenomenal project. These are some properties that probably should be redeveloped, and so I think this is going to be terrific, but we, we should listen to the neighbors to get their feedback. But I just try to get a sense of the timing of this. They're not going to try and move and do anything this year, from your understanding.
I don't believe they would move any dirt this year.
Well, then, let's take all the time.
All right. So the motion is for a memo, you want to re-tape the memo?
Sorry.
Yeah, I would move that we request staff for a technical memo in time for the next regular council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does one favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carried.
So before you go on, is that clear? You have not established a date to put this on the agenda then, right?
No.
No, I'm saying, the next step. Okay.
Second is a letter from Koabui regarding amendment to the option agreement for purchase of surplus land in Harrison and Welbeck.
Mark, go ahead. We need Mark and Kelly here to explain the process. You see, it's pretty clear what they're asking for, but maybe, I don't know if they handle it to explain where we're at.
So your May twenty-seventh meeting, you approved an option agreement with this group to acquire the Harrison surplus property and then to build up to twelve units with workforce housing tax credits. And what they're saying is they would like to move faster, but they would inherit some risk because the agreement says if they don't get the tax credits, they can't do the project. So I think what they're asking for is to tweak the option agreement to say that they either get tax credits or they will still price the homes in accordance with the expectations of counsel about what a tax credit project is. So if you're, if you remember, the initial proposal in May was between two-hundred-and-forty-five and two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for the homes. We still have an expectation of a development agreement to control the project. That wouldn't change with this. They're just really asking if you're willing to do this, whether it gets tax credits or not, knowing there'd still be some kind of price control. That's what they're asking for.
Well, the only clarification, though, is their letter says add or below three-hundred-thousand dollars with or without the tax credits. If they had said, consistent with the, our option agreement, that we set prices on it to be one thing, but this is, seems to be changed, moving the...
So the original MOU did talk about three-hundred, below three-hundred-thousand dollars.
Okay.
Then, when the more formal proposal came in May, it was between two-forty and two-seventy-five.
Okay.
So the below three-hundred, if you go way back to the first MOU, that, that is consistent with our expectations. And if they didn't get tax credits, you could probably assume that they would cost a little bit more to make up for not getting that incentive. So I haven't talked to them personally. If you pass this for, if you move this forward to do something, obviously we'll, we'll clarify that with them, but that's, that would be my guess.
I have a question from Mark.
Sure.
About, so we have, we were the subject of a public records request, right? And we're kind of under the microscope about the sale of this property for a dollar. And you had mentioned that, you know, because it's for workforce-style housing, that could be considered economic development and thus the sale of that land for a dollar is, is legitimate.
Yes.
Um, is their request here, does taking action on that request endanger that argument?
No, it doesn't, because what really makes the difference in terms of, you know, the state law that says you can't sell real property for less than fair market value is that we're able to say, "We're putting these conditions on the property and therefore we can sell it for," you know, that affects the, the market value and therefore we can sell it for less. So i-if we're putting the same conditions on that IFA would have put on, then we can, we still have that justification for, for selling them the property at the reduced price.
Okay. But we would want to be careful to make sure we put in the same conditions that they would need to meet for the workforce housing.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm having a little bit of difficulty in thinking about this price at or below three-hundred-thousand dollars, which you asked about mayor. If they get the workforce housing tax credits, we want them to build the houses at the price that we already agreed to. So if we change the agreement to say at or below three-hundred-thousand, are, they aren't obligated to do the houses, are they? Or is that part of the workforce housing?
So you're a little bit, okay, I think we're kind of struggling with a non-agenda item right here. The option agreement is more involved than what we just said. The second prerequisite for them controlling the property is to enter into a development agreement with the city. The development agreement would control the actual costs and configuration of the homes. The option agreement does not control that. If we don't agree to a development agreement, they never possess the property. So your discretion still resides in step two of this process about a future development agreement. So even though that two, like, even though that two-forty-five to two-seventy-five is discussed, we haven't worked through the expectations of what the energy-efficient home must be. There could be some extra costs. I don't think anything was written in stone that two-seventy-five is the top number. But we don't know that because we haven't gotten to that development step where you still have absolute control over it. So for, for tonight, I think that the request is whether you're willing to direct the city attorney's office to prepare an amendment to the option agreement only to add to the first criteria of either get tax credits or to, I guess, be below three-hundred-thousand dollars as, as defined in that letter. And then we would put that on the July eighth meeting for you to decide.
But let's make it clear, through the development agreement, they could be more specific and say
Absolutely.
between two-seventy-five and two-fifty.
The development agreement is still at your complete discretion.
Yep. But we don't know what, I'm sorry, we don't know what this individual means. I mean, he could have very carefully chosen the words. And if we went ahead and say at below three-hundred-thousand, and then he, let's say he even gets the tax credits and comes back and says, "Oh, okay, you said we can go ahead and do this, and I'm at two-ninety-nine." So then what? Do we go ahead and just say we don't approve the development? I'm just wondering, how do we, how, how can counsel clearly communicate what their expectations are in a way to try and help them accelerate? But the point is, I, my perception of what counsel talked about was they were attracted to the price points that were talked about. See what I'm saying?
I just, we haven't had that. I can't answer that tonight because we haven't talked to them. They submitted a letter.
Yeah, no.
Right. So it's something we can look into, but I don't have any answers to that, that kind of a detail at this point.
When do they notify, are notified on that?
So again, the option agreement does not set the sales price. It will be the development agreement that has never, has not yet been written.
But don't they have to develop their portion of the development agreement based on what we say for price point?
I, I'm sorry, just, we do not have enough detail to tell you what's in the development agreement right now.
No, I, I get that. But if we say this in the...
The option agreement.
In the option, right? If I'm them and I'm writing up what I am interested in presenting to the city as part of the development agreement, I'm more likely to shoot for two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. I mean, that would be me. Maybe it's a good thing I'm not developing these. But I, I think we set an expectation with this that may lead them to, to expect something that we are not expecting. And I get they haven't given us that data, but if I'm them, I'm looking at what is said most recently, which is not what we were anticipating. I, I mean, is that a misconception about how these things work?
Well, you can always put in the purchase option those specific numbers too, can't you, along with all the other stuff you talk about?
The advice of, of Vicki was to keep development agreement terms out of an option agreement.
Right.
And to deal with the development agreement separately. That was, that was the structure of the option agreement on May twenty-seventh. I, I'm just going by the conversation. Vicki and I had a lot of discussion about what goes in and what doesn't.
Right.
And that's where we landed on
Yeah.
this development agreement is a whole separate process.
So there'll be no reference about under three-hundred-thousand dollars in the, in the purchase option? What you're saying?
It'll either be that or somehow.
Well, if you put that in there, you're getting specific then.
Right. Well, I, I think we can probably do this in a way where we don't reference the three-hundred-thousand dollars.
Could we say that meets the criteria, that meets the criteria of the workforce housing tax credits?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the May thirteenth CAF. I'm quoting from the staff report or from the CAF. "The developer has indicated that the price points of two-forty-five to two-seventy-five are within the range of allowable costs for the state workforce house tax credit program." And directs, and the motion I believe was direct staff to prepare a land purchase option agreement for Keystone, price one buck, conform to the terms consistent with proposed development concept instead of date for public hearing. Mark, what do you recommend? I, I think my understanding is counsel is, is, is not comfortable with just saying, not having some kind of a price range. I think my understanding is council is, is not comfortable with just saying, not having some kind of a price range, that's what the expectation is.
Well, I think what Bronwyn just suggested a minute ago, to say, you know, either the tax credits or, you know,
The same criteria.
They can proceed, but under the same guidelines as the tax credit, which will be determined in the development agreement.
Will that work, Kelly?
Which technically is three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
The state program goes up to three hundred and ten. So again, the original, so I understand we got something in May, the original MOU was sales price of three hundred thousand or less. So I assume that's where they lifted that request. It would have been nice to know that four weeks ago. I don't know that that changes how we looked at the project, it was still a workforce housing tax credit project. I don't know that we have any more to add, we can talk to them, maybe they can explain what they're thinking. But tonight, I don't know what we can add to this.
Can I try?
It's just a question whether you want us to go any further with this request. If you don't want to, we can be done.
Alright.
And they'll just have to wait six weeks and, or four to six weeks, and then we'll move on.
Go ahead.
I would move that we direct the city attorney's office to change the language in the option agreement to remove the requirement for receiving workforce house tax credits and replace it instead with meeting the same criteria for the workforce housing tax credits.
Second.
Can we not remove it, just
Yeah.
At a second option?
Changes. At a second
Second option, yeah.
Sure, yes.
Yep, yep.
An alternative, an option. Yeah.
Second.
So then we're willing to consider houses that are
Well, so is the workforce housing tax credit program.
Yes.
Okay. You got the, Carly, you got that?
They are also willing to consider three hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, you want to read it, go ahead.
Can you hear me? So I'm going with, in, to direct the city attorney's office to change the language in the option agreement to add an option to meet the workforce housing tax credit requirements, rather than to or in addition to the requirement to receive?
Rather than.
Rather than?
Receiving.
Than receiving, rather than receiving.
State workforce tax credit.
I don't understand this motion. I mean, I just don't. And, so, we don't change the original agreement, we would amend it, and there's language there that says that all other terms are going to stay the same. So this is a fairly narrow change, but could you help us? I don't understand what we're giving up here with this. I feel like we're overthinking this, but I don't, and I'm not able to articulate why.
They can still proceed, is what it means, even if they didn't get the credits. If they are sure that they can keep those houses within the parameters of the workforce housing tax credit program, even if they don't get the tax credits, they can still purchase the property and proceed. Without altering it in the way we just did, they need to have those workforce housing tax credit approval in hand before they can purchase the property and proceed with anything.
And is your understanding, and I appreciate that, is your understanding that, well, this motion is consistent with their request?
I believe it is.
Okay, that's all I need.
Yep.
Okay, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carried. And the third item is just information from PA relating to twenty-six, twenty-seven analysis or asset team priorities. And I think it's also supplemental to the meeting we'll be having on Thursday night.
Yeah, urging your attendance and participation on Thursday night.
Alright, we'll move on to a report of governing bodies. Discover Ames, anything?
So, and I'd like to report that Discover Ames had an audit performed and the audit gave Discover Ames a clean bill of health, and for me, that was the main takeaway from the meeting. We, actually, I should also say, we had the director of Raymond Gardens give a very good report about the increase in attendance to Raymond Gardens. She's bringing a lot of energy and new programming, and it was a very positive report. We have a lot of people from out of town coming to the Raymond Gardens and bringing their dollars with them to spend in our restaurants and hotels. And so it's a very positive report.
I'm curious, how do events get posted on their website or on their calendar at Discover Ames? Do you know? I was just talking to one of the organizers of Ames Triathlon, and there was nothing on their website related to that. So I didn't know if it had to be sponsored or
No, I think you just have to email them.
You just have to send it to them.
Yeah. Do what?
Just have to send it to them.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I, I'm just impressed that you would think I would know the answer to that question.
There's a request form on the website underneath the calendar.
I knew all those answers.
You're just trying to test me, right? It's ten fifteen and we're getting ready.
No, that's right. Good meeting.
Alright. International Economic Alliance?
I don't think we've had a meeting since the last
I was sick for our last meeting, so I
Okay. Story Kind Worries and Management Association Agency will not be meeting until, I think it's in July. Transit?
I got it. We did some video surveillance equipment replacement. We did that, and then we're getting five new battery electric buses in the fall. And so we're getting some more charging infrastructure over at CyRide. And then, I won't ask for a drum roll, but the American Public Transit Association fact book was just released and CyRide is now second in the nation for ridership per capita, so that's very exciting news.
Who got bumped, San Francisco?
Yeah, I think they went down to four, actually. San Francisco, so.
So we're getting how many new buses?
Five new battery electric buses.
It's remarkable.
Pretty exciting.
I'm trying to remember the price tag on those, those were like a million and a half, something like that?
No, it's probably a million, maybe one.
Yeah, it's remarkable.
So, pretty exciting stuff with CyRide, and then that's what we talked about at the last meeting.
You also applied for a big grant, too.
Oh, yes, the, like, expansion grant for the facility expansion, that one too. But I don't have actually a ton of information about all of that.
Alright. Well, it's good to see you back in person, Emily, so why don't you start us off with the council comments?
It's good to be back, it's good to see everybody. Internship's going really well. My supervisor's an Iowa State University grad who grew up in Ames, his parents live here, so, super fun. We got to pick a date for the fall joint meeting, so I'll talk to Amy about that tomorrow. But I'm just wondering, do you guys want me to, it'll be on a Wednesday, because that's when our Senate meetings are?
Why don't you just reach out to Renee and then Renee can
Do you guys want it to be on a council week or not?
I don't have a preference.
Okay, the last one was thanks, the week before Thanksgiving break, so we might just kind of stick with that.
Week before Thanksgiving break will be NLC?
Maybe we should do it, maybe we should do it a little earlier than that.
A little earlier?
Towards the latter part of October, maybe, versus
Okay. I like that.
That kind of gives you more in the mid semester, too.
Yeah, I like that better. Okay.
Good. Thank you. Rachel?
Nothing for me tonight.
So I have a quick matter to discuss, I sent you an email regarding our city attorney. So Mark has faithfully attended almost all of the workshops in his eight years of tenure. And I think it'd be appropriate for us to give direction to him that, that attendance at our city workshops be optional for him. So if he thinks it's relevant to his performance of his duties and understanding of the workings of the city, he can attend, he can always watch them by video, but we ask so much of our city staff, and I think if we can lighten the load a little bit for him in this, I think it'd be helpful. So I don't know if we need a motion to this effect.
Yep.
So I, I would move that we give the city attorney discretion as to attending city council workshops.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this something we have to put on a future agenda? Or, I mean, we can't decide that without it being on an agenda, right? You're making a motion to put that vote on a future
I mean, can't we just do it now? Can you decide this for yourself?
You can't, hey, you can't rule on that.
We need to get outside counsel, we need to get outside counsel.
It's illegal.
We have to get outside counsel to advise you on it. No, you can, you can go ahead, it's just an internal thing, it's not
Not policy?
Yeah, it's not a policy. And I, I want to say that Tim suggested this, I didn't ask for this, so I just want to emphasize that.
We're not going to ever review you again.
So you aren't going to like my question, then? Does, does the motion put the entire decision in the city attorney's hands or can the city council also ask at their discretion to have the city attorney present at a workshop? But it sounds like it's now going to be all the city attorney deciding.
We, and it's a fair question, I'm trying to remember back when we have ever had a situation where we've needed city attorney input on, in a workshop. And if you foresaw that there was an issue where that was a possibility, then I think we communicate that to the city attorney's office and they could work through that with us. But, yeah, I think it's a very rare day when we, where we're asking Mark for input in those workshops.
And I would say if any council member contacted me and said, I think you ought to be there, I would show up. I mean, I've come to every workshop, I think everyone, for the last eight years, so I'm, I'm certainly happy to come to them. It's, you know, I, I don't know what prior city attorneys have done, I think my predecessor came to some and didn't come to some. So I just made a conscious choice to come to all of them when I became city attorney, so, but, you know. Sometimes I sit here and wonder why I'm here.
Alright, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, Tim.
Amber?
Nothing for me.
You sure?
Yes.
If you don't know, I'm trying to stall, because I had estimated ten thirty. Just kidding, unbelievable.
Just that we had a chance to view the Fitch Family Aquatic Center this past week, for those that were available. And, super exciting, and, yeah, can't wait.
Rhonda?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Gloria?
I will be sending you an email regarding the interaction between shared use, shared use paths and railway lines, so watch for that.
Alright. I just want to, for those who sent you all the texts, fantastic event at Ada Hayden on Saturday. It was the sixth annual Ames Triathlon, almost three hundred and fifty athletes. I think there's at least one, if not a couple, of professional triathletes that come. And also, there was a person who was celebrating his fifth anniversary of a heart transplant. And he was competing in the full triathlon, and he was accompanied by someone to make sure that anything, you know, happened. He was able to, you know, attend to him right away. But it brings in families, it brings in friends, it brings in a lot of support. And I was talking to a gal who said this was her first triathlon, she was, she was doing training down in Des Moines. And I said, well, you need to go to Ames for your first triathlon, it is so well organized and the venue is absolutely fantastic. And so it's really developing quite a reputation, and I think it's just something we should welcome and celebrate. And our parks really shine and looked fantastic. With that, our team motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Alright, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.